We're gonna go ahead and start this town council work session for Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. We are going to rearrange a little bit because the county commissioners aren't here quite yet. So we're just gonna start with planning commission decisions and then work into legislative review. And when the county commissioners get here, we'll go back up. Good?
Sounds good.
Carol's online, so if she has anything to say, we will include her. So we'll talk about planning commission decisions first. Long discussion. I thought it was a great discussion. Any input? No? Good? All good, Carol? I'm gonna assume you are unless you jump in.
They're not supposed to have input.
Yep, no input, Dick says. Not allowed. Alright.
Carol wasn't planning on speaking unless she had.
Okay, that sounds good. Alright, so moving on to legislative review, the 2023 supplemental budget appropriation, second reading, Tracy, please. Sorry, we're a little early. Thank you for, glad you're here.
Glad to. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Protamang, council members. I am here for the second reading of the final appropriation for 2023. There has been a very slight change to the first reading, and that was confirmed with guessing that I could just roll it into the second reading without having to go through any details. The only thing that would had changed from the original 102,000 was an additional 50,000 for the healthcare benefits fund, and that was really to cover the the disbursements of the variable costs that were incurred in 2023 but weren't paid out until 2024. So the accrual was 50 grand more than what I had anticipated. So that was the only change that brings the total appropriation to 152,000. So open for questions.
Think we can handle that. Any questions?
No.
Dick?
Nope.
Tracy, I met with the auditing team today, and they said you guys are exceptional. And I said, are they as good as we think? Because we don't really know anything about this, and they've said they are.
That's lovely to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's quite a compliment.
Alright, moving on to housing code amendment regarding liens for unpaid admin fines.
Mayor Protamang, folks, members, this is an ordinance I'm thinking of since first. I won't go too far into the details since we discussed this a lot last time, but on first reading. This is building our enforcement program and adding into our housing regulations a provision that will allow for us to certify liens to be filed on property when we have, you know, significant violations of our housing code, and we've tried to gain compliance through notice and opportunities to cure. And then we also stage a fine schedule. But if we still have not gained compliance and there are unpaid fines, this would allow the housing staff to certify a lien to the county in order to place that lien.
I think it's a great approach.
Sounds like a good improvement. Yeah.
Is this, are we talking about appeals too, or is that next?
Yeah, that one's next. I can go right into that.
Great.
So the... Yes, thank you. Apparently my mic doesn't have an, um, okay, so we talked about certification of liens in the housing code regulations. That is on second reading, and the additional change that we're proposing is an amendment to the same chapter in the development code for housing regulations. And this is really just cleaning up some of the timeframes for appeals when we impose violations and fines. We have to give an opportunity for someone to dispute our position. And this makes a change to try to schedule those hearings on appeal within a 30-day timeframe. There's also a new provision in there that allows a someone who's been imposed a fine, who's appealing an opportunity to try to resolve the matter in lieu of going to hearing if there is a way to do that mutually agreeable between the town manager and the individual who's in violation.
And this is, you've already had success with it.
Yes, yes. This is a, I would say that this is something that happens as a matter of practice. And so we're just codifying it in the municipal code, so we can be clear on the process.
Kirsten, so the appeal is with the town attorney, correct?
The appeal process, there are various ways that we have built in the appeal process in our current code. But for housing right now, the appeal goes to the town manager or a third-party hearing officer.
Okay.
And we have contracted with a person to perform those hearings for us.
Okay. But you get involved at some point and try to resolve, which I think is a great idea to try to before it takes up a lot of staff time and everything else.
Yes, I definitely have a strong role because they are like mini trials. So if they do get to the hearing stage, we present our case and have witnesses. It's an informal, it's an informal procedure, but I am very involved. And then so this kind of pre-resolution phase allows the opportunity to negotiate a settlement, essentially.
Okay. Yeah, when I was reading, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I think that's the best approach, and I'm guessing that'll resolve the vast majority of them. But I just want to make sure the complaint then, or the
Yes.
whatever we're called.
Yeah.
Have an opportunity to appeal beyond if they can't figure it out.
Yeah, well, and that's a really good point. So this is the administrative appeal process. But once it goes to hearing and there's a final determination, then of course, someone can take their complaint to district. They have to exhaust the administrative process first.
Thanks, good.
Anything?
Oh, it's great.
Okay, thanks, Kirsten. Alright, moving on to the subordination agreement for Staples Village, first reading. Lori? And did we get the, I feel like
I love this one.
First thing supposed to be pulled over?
I don't believe so.
Pardon me?
Don't think so.
Yes, they were maybe going to be available if we needed them. I think this is a pretty basic, we do these subordinations frequently. And I don't think she, she was gonna sign in at three, so she's probably not paying attention right now. But yeah, this is subordination that's required by First Bank for Suzanne to be able to get her financing for the Staples. We always knew that she would be having to, that's why we hired a developer so that they can go out and get the financing. And it's pretty common that the lender is requiring that we subordinate to their loan, similar to what we've done with Alta Verde, and First Bank was the loan lender over on Smith Ranch as well. So we've reviewed it and had lots of discussions with First Bank and feel comfortable moving forward with the subordination.
Thank you.
Laura, is this draw-based in the fact that they're only, they don't get the whole pie?
Yeah.
Based on the, it corresponds with the stage of construction?
Yeah, absolutely. First Bank's gonna go be looking at the stages of construction before they would release any draw. And our money is in, actually, you know, Suzanne's money's in first, our money's in second. And then we're using the lender's money last because of the interest rate and trying just to, you know, minimize the cost of the project by drawing from the lender at the last. I would be super surprised if she ever needed to draw the full 20 million because, you know, as proceeds start rolling in, she'll have proceeds to cover the costs going forward. And so when you look at the total cost of this project and where all the money is coming from, really, the gap is only about $4 million, but it's just the timings. You might not have the proceeds yet, so. But we've looked at her timing and feel pretty comfortable with it, and they're moving along.
You don't want to get caught partially through a project without financing.
Oh, no, I, yeah, you know, we
You're not gonna get it.
This is just the right time for her to be sort of inking the deal. You know, you don't want to get it first because you don't want to be paying your interest rates or your carry costs on that loan. So nope, this is pretty typical with the development. We also do subordinations on just regular mortgages all the time, too, so kind of familiar with it.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's exciting how fast it's going.
Oh, it's super exciting, and now we're starting to roll out the lottery information for the next phase.
Might have to do a tour while it drives up.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on to ordinance to adopt new water rents.
It's like he just got up.
I think we're gonna have Shannon and maybe What is my next?
May have to knock you off, well, really. Sorry, I'm late. The chair's warm for you.
Good afternoon. James is tied up on a SIRSAC call, so he can't be here, the early start.
Problem. Thank you very much for sitting in.
So this ordinance is a bit of housekeeping. These new water rates were first adopted in 2023, and they are part of the 2024 budget. Did have some code language that needed to be brought up to be congruent with the new water rates.
And Shannon, I just, when I reviewed this, I remembered that really we had to do this kind of an increase, this amount of increase, because otherwise, well, we will be going into the red anyway with this fund.
We would, yeah.
It's not, we're not doing this for any other reason besides to pay for the water that people are using.
True.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's the case, that there's no additional, you know, it's just, it's a big increase, and I just wanted to make sure that we had that.
A large number of water fund capital projects in the works with, you know, the dam being one of those ones that drove the pro forma into the negative and the need to have these rates increase as well. We have a lot of water line construction we need to do, need to rehab the Gary Roberts Water Treatment Plant below the tarn. That's another big one coming online. So there, there are a lot of capital investments that we need to make to this.
How much will we end up putting into the Roberts?
Determined. We haven't gone into design yet.
Do you have a guess?
The pro forma, it's in the 20 million plus.
Yeah.
Any federal money out there, you think?
There are. There is. We want to get going on design, and then once we figure that out, really try to dive into some of those construction dollars.
Cool. But we're really not, even with these increases, we're still kind of middle of the road with other resort towns, right? I mean, our water, we were cheap before, now we're normal. Sweet.
Yeah, that was one of our goals, to keep the water affordable. Yeah.
Specifically, 122412. It's, it appears to simplify billing for commercial accounts. But I was just curious why that, if you knew the background of why the, the size of the meter was, why the fees were based on there originally, just so that we know when we get rid of it, are there any unintended consequences of that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So back when we were based on meter sizes, there was a way to game the system by having a larger meter size, and then you'd have more water for that cost. So by making it just based on usage and not a meter size, it's equal for everyone.
Excellent. Yeah.
Good bit of housekeeping.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions?
Guessing that was a good catch, somebody got.
Alright.
It's like a tuna kid have a small, small meter size.
Alright, I think that's it. Thank you very much for coming up. We have the resolution for the donation to FERC, Family Intercultural Resource Center, which we already approved, but we need to do that by resolution according to the town attorney, so.
Kelly, do we have any communication with the other towns that we have approved this and we're moving forward with it?
Yes, so at the last managers' meeting, I think they had hoped to have a discussion on what everybody wanted to do. And I let them know that as we normally are, we were first to ask the question, and council had committed to the $50,000. So that sounds like the county is planning to commit 50,000, although what I didn't realize is that the FERC previously had a navigator for SNAP. And it sounds like that person left and the position hasn't been filled, and the county is seeing less applications for SNAP. So they, it sounded like they might talk to Brian about, you know, whether or not maybe that some of that money could be used to fund a person to do that work again. If we could get more people on SNAP, then it might relieve some of the pressure on the food market. So they committed to that. It sounded like Frisco is having a presentation from FERC to their council and that they were proposing 50,000 as well. I don't know what Dylan and Silverthorne are planning yet.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions? Alright, thanks, Shannon. The action to adopt water attorney rates. Our buddy Glenn Porzac.
Yeah, as you all know very well, Glenn Porzac serves as our water lawyer. And I think this is the first time he's requested an increase in his rates in many years. And so he is proposing to go from 400 to 450. And that needs to be approved by resolution. The charter, to be specific, is council sets special counsel rates, so that's why this is coming to.
An hour per day.
Yeah, times have changed.
Alright.
Do we have any just ballpark of how many, how many hours a week, a month, a year do we contract with him? Or does he, were his billable hours with us on a normal, non-special event kind of monthly? Are we spending like five hours a month? Are we spending 40? Do you know?
You know, we have all that, and I have looked at it very closely. Off the top of my head, I can't probably give you very specific information. I'm happy to follow up. However, I will say that, and I will confirm this when I go back and look, that there have been times where we've needed a lot of work from Glenn. For example, when we came to you with the Blue River Settlement Agreement. I mean, that had been going on for many, many, many years and lots of his time. And then there's other projects that he works on that are just kind of nominal and intermittent. I don't know if that's helpful, but I'm happy to share with you all.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it, well, ballpark.
Yeah, and another
Water attorney as well?
Tom Corver is the county's water.
I was just curious if he split that time or if we split that time with anyone for the for the reservoir, but none of their users are.
Now, I don't know. I will say that his bills get paid out of the water enterprise, so a little bit differently than other special counsel invoices are paid. I'm happy to kind of look into more details, so if you want to send me any follow-up questions, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Alright, into managers' report, public projects update. Shannon, again. Lots of asphalt.
He's fucking over.
McCain access road.
Hello, again. So I gave a little update here on where we're thinking about for doing the overlay. I want to talk about McCain Access Road and just continue to update on the fuel system replacement. Before we dive into McCain, are there other questions I can address on any projects?
No.
So as far as McCain, I've heard we need a little bit more background about why we're building this road?
I think it'd just be good to have a refresher. I feel like kind of every time it comes up with this big price tag that it's something we should just talk about.
Absolutely. I mean, it's been on the master plan for a while, and I know we've gone through many McCain master plans. What really obligated us to start considering the roadway coming all the way through is the 2019 land exchange in IGA with the school district. So as part of that IGA, we're obligated to provide them a road, water, gas, and electricity to their site. So that builds the road, you know, about halfway. And then the road also from the Coin Valley side provides access to the open space parcel where we've considered perhaps parking and a trailhead in the future. And then it also gives us access to the public works yard and snow storage. It's pretty important to have a non-Highway 9 access into our yard so we can move heavy equipment like the motor graders, the loaders. We really don't want to be pushing those down Highway 9 if we don't have to. And then it also shortens the haul route for the snow storage. Rather than going all the way down to the Fairview Roundabout, we can come off of Coin and shorten that up, and you know, it's a bit safer to keep those heavy trucks out of the roundabout in the winter as well. And then, you know, it's also a secondary road for egress in and out of the neighborhood, although we don't want that to be the primary route. But as far as public safety goes, it's always nice to have additional routes in and out. So that's how it came to be. So it was, you know, budgeted and contemplated in 2018 and 2019 for that school district exchange. We initially needed to have that road completed by 2023, per the agreement. But in 2020, we moved it out to 2026 with the school district, if that makes sense. Because we delayed it during the pandemic. We were gonna go to construction on it, but it was one of the ones we cut. So that's the background I wanted to give. Is there any questions about that piece?
Does it, if it's a secondary, I don't know, if it's a secondary road used for public works, does it need to be a paved, I was just thinking, road? Like, can we do just a crusher fine or just a dirt road?
I mean, we need to pave it to the school district, right?
So that was gonna be my part of the question is, is there any reason to defer this conversation a little bit on that? Or, you know, is anything we're talking about with the school district right now gonna impact that part of the discussion?
It could, you know, we're waiting, I think we should hear from the school district again the first week of March. We still don't have a good feeling about whether or not they want to give up the opportunity to have that parcel. That doesn't mean we couldn't, you know, even if they keep it, they're probably not building on it anytime soon. And so we could time the road more with their development. I don't know how that impacts the other needs that Shannon mentioned.
Yeah, it's not ideal to have a dirt road out to our area. It becomes pretty difficult to maintain during the spring months, especially with the heavy haul trucks going out. I think we would end up in a situation where that road is needing a lot of maintenance and a lot of continued dollars on it to serve our needs getting out to the public works yard. And I didn't mention also the water line, assuming the school district parcel will be developed by something. The water line that goes to Alta Verde 2 needs to continue all the way up to Coin. And we have to have a looped system. We can't just dead-end it there. It's dead-ended right now for Alta Verde, but it needs to get to Coin regardless. So we have to do a portion of this work just to keep that water line up to code and functional in the long term.
Well, this might be more for James, but, um, will that, will we be able to avoid all the housing with the haul trucks when we're hauling snow? I mean, be, create a little separation for noise. Great. I mean, that's a positive.
In that way, we won't be going by the housing developments, we'll be coming in Coin. And then stopping on the south side of the school parcel is where our snow storage is now programmed.
That'll be a real positive.
Yeah, and it also will provide access to our commercial renters out there, the landscaping company. We have the glass hauler out there. We have the Staples out there right now.
They're in the landscaping space.
Columbine Hills Landscaping purchased two of these.
They took it over. Second question, are we contemplating a split rails fence? This might be more of an open space question. Some kind of fence to keep people from just pulling over the side of the road and going out onto that open space area? And try to organize amended trails or is that being contemplated or thought of?
Had a bunch of split rail out there. I didn't reinstall it when the landscaping went up, but I think we are going to get some more of that in. Once, yeah, once we get this road construction done and we're kind of at a stasis for a year or two to prevent too much of the public from accessing the river right now.
And did you say you're gonna do the trailhead as part of the road at the same time?
No, it's, we haven't decided what that's gonna look like yet. There are some planning dollars and some construction dollars programmed into the CIP for the next two years. I don't think it's in '24. I'd have to look. But we want to decide what we want that open space programming to be. And the thought is staff will bring the council some ideas of rec path alignment. Are we gonna go with mountain biking loops? Are we gonna go with some accessible, not really hiking, accessible trails and that sort of thing? So we have to do some more planning, I think, to get it right and decide what we want to do.
So currently, public, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Currently, Public Works is driving on Highway 9. Or like the dumpster or all the haulers and all the machinery goes down Highway 9 to get to the, the snow storage?
Yeah, currently, we're not utilizing that snow storage. We still get to use Airport Road Block 11 right now. And we're getting tight on that, but hopefully this year we can continue to use that. But once the housing goes to the next phase, we're going to McCain with the trucks. So next winter, we think we're going to McCain with the trucks.
Two things I wanted to mention, one, on the sort of rec path alignment. We were hoping that by not doing some of that work with the road, that we might have some, we might be eligible for some grant funding. And the timing might be better for grant funding than it would have been for the road. And then the other thing, I'll just tell this council, I know it could change in the future, but and we'll continue to share this with the school district, but it would be problematic if they decide to build housing on that parcel. Because we are gonna run out of places for snow storage, and we're gonna be kind of dialed into using that area. And it will be disruptive if they decide to build housing.
And will it be disruptive because of the noise or because we're using a portion of their parcel for snort, snow storage?
I think for noise, yeah.
They're not gonna, I can't see them building housing anytime soon.
Me either.
Be adjacent to that housing development with our public works yard. That's the background. The project is out to bid. So if we were thinking about a change in the schedule, we would have to probably make that decision swiftly. Good news on the bid, I think. I reviewed the budgets, and we have the design engineer's cost estimate. And I think we have at least $3 million in savings over the budget. That's a combination of a few things. Alta Verde 2 built a portion of the road, more than $1 million of housing money went into a portion of it. We got some of the grading done with the river rebuild. And then we are delaying some portions of the original project, like the rec path, the sidewalks and the pedestrian lights. I don't want to put those in until we make some final decisions of what's going out there. So all that, I think we should have substantial savings like we thought over the budget.
It's, in addition to what's on there, or it was 12-4, now it's 9-4?
No, it's 9-4. We should be able to cut that down.
6-4-ish.
I'm hoping.
Great.
Coming in in about a week and a half. I forget the date, and we'll see, but it should be pretty good.
Less expensive is better.
Always. It's so rare. I think you should impress Jeffrey. I know, right? No promises, but I'm feeling really good.
I'm trying to get up to speed, you know?
Shannon, will we get to see the rec path options that council will get to see?
Absolutely. It's sort of gonna be a teamwork between engineering and open space and how we wanna, we want to present that to council.
That's great. Alright, any more questions?
Yes, is the eminent "Welcome to the Kingdom" sign, is that Public Works? I mean, is that a public project?
Project now. It's part of the Blue River Pathways Project.
What's, uh, what's the schedule on that? What are we thinking? And is it, the location, is it gonna be kind of across from the hot stone on that big chair or at the Blue River Plaza?
We have not picked a location. I would not recommend the Blue River Plaza personally. There's already a lot going on there, and this sign is huge. It's 5 by 10, 6 by 12, something. It's
It's a road.
Giant. It's a road scale sign, and it's a gateway sign. So I think we want to pick a gateway location to put it. Maybe along the rec path. Maybe next to the gondola. Maybe somewhere else.
I don't like any of those.
You don't like any of those? You only like Blue River?
I I had, I like it someplace where people uh, kind of can walk, can park near and there's a backdrop for a photo opportunity.
Maybe we should take a walk, figure one out. You gonna be around in the spring?
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully.
If he makes it.
Hopefully we should. Go do a decision before April seventh, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm just not loving Blue River Plaza, Jeffrey. I'm really not.
You don't like Blue River. How about by the big chair?
It's too big across from Hartsville.
I mean, I'd love to have it there, but I don't think that's really a gateway.
I don't see it as a gateway, you know, I mean, it was a gateway sign. I see it more as a as a tribute to our history. You know what I'm saying? And you know, and the people can take a picture in front of it and and we'll have a little placard explaining the League of Women Voters and the governor coming up and all that stuff.
I got you. We don't have any strong recommendations yet. I will bring it to you as part of.
Well, I have some strong recommendations.
I know. But I think we should go for a little walk.
This might be as important as a plastic water bottle.
I'm glad it's elevated. It's such a high level of importance. Commissioners are behind me.
You guys can have this walkabout.
Yeah, well, thank you. I just hope she can keep up.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, commissioners, you guys wanna come forward?
Wow, it's kinda like a man like a deja vu. Dropping off.
They're the big guy.
Yeah, I had him tied up earlier. I was getting that seat.
She's firm but fair and fairly firm.
All right. Thank you guys for coming down.
Sorry to be late. Some things are beyond our control.
Worth the wait. Okay, so we
Liquor license hearing.
Yeah. Didn't need to.
Need some of our snacks?
No, thank you.
I've got cheese.
Oh, war cheese.
Yeah.
We call it, we call it war cheese around here.
War cheese, yeah, give me a war cheese. I stole it.
Nina got it.
I go.
All right. Thank you guys very much for coming. It sounds like we um, agreed on an agenda. There were a few things that were thrown out. Um, micro transit, goals for the housing authority and then pay as you throw. Um, is there any strong preference in how we attack these or should we just start at the start?
No, but I'm just gonna apologize in advance. I'm coming late and leaving early, so sorry. I have to leave at three ten. My kids have a dentist appointment.
Which one is most important to you?
Um, they're all important, Mayor. Uh, let's, I'm fine doing them in the order in which they, you listed them off.
Okay, micro transit first. Um, Shannon, did you want to introduce micro transit? Or I'm not sure who put micro transit on the.
No, it is a high priority for all of us, but Commissioner Mamula is in charge for us.
So I I think in a nutshell, um, the transit board of which uh, Matt Hulsey represents the town of Breckenridge has engaged a um, consultant about micro transit. Um, and micro transit would be those reps that here. Um, micro transit be those um, areas that aren't on any static lines. So think Peak Seven, think uh, Dillon Valley, think um, Summit Cove. Areas that could be served by transit, but it'd be a different kind of component, um, potentially on call. Um, in the study, saw seven nodes where this could could happen, seven nodes, six nodes, about a million and a half dollars apiece. Um, recommendations from the board are honestly all over the place. My suggestion was start with one or two to, you know, maybe a Peak Seven and a Summit Cove to see if it works to begin with. The number one recommendation out of the study though was to make sure that your static lines actually worked. And we're serving everybody they could, which I thought was really um, pretty interesting. But I think there's some legs to get something done. In our, in our first meeting about this, I did um, push the town of Brex concern that since the town has spent so much money and continues to do so on their own bus service, that it would be unfair for any of the towns to get micro transit without um, the town of Breck getting some commensurate. Either dollars or service. Um, and then of course, this whole thing leads into an overall discussion about having a regional transit authority eventually. Where all transit would be under one authority, would all be paid for by one authority and that's something to consider for the future. So.
That's sort of, does that sound about? Matt? That sound about right?
So would you say the next step is that it um, deciding on where the couple of nodes are for a project or?
I think so. And I I, it'd be interesting to hear how you felt about, you know, taking it slow. There were some members of the board that would like to just do it, just do it, just go, let's just blow it out. Let's find a a operator that can can do everything. I I think there's a feeling that the current um, the current summit stage can't handle this, so you'd have to go to an outside operator. Um, that does this kind of thing. And I think there's a couple um, couple vendors in particular that um, Matt has talked about that are are good in this space.
You know, I mean, I I think a no brainer is Peak Seven. Uh, uh, do we have a concern about doing something like this on a dirt road?
I don't think so, cause there's smaller vehicles. It's a smaller vehicle. It's a, it's an on-call service, so you would probably use an app. Arrange and once there was enough and there was enough riders, then they would, they would do their circle. It's not just a, hey, Jeffrey needs a ride into town kind of service. And it connects to transit. That's another pretty important part of it. It has to have a a connection to a static line. So Summit Cove, for instance, they wouldn't drive you to Dillon. They would drive you to the bus stop that the stage has that goes in between Keystone and Dillon. Or Keystone and Silverthorne.
But if someone, if someone, you know, they they take it to work every morning, seven thirty in the morning. You know, would they be, would they be hosed if if they, there wasn't enough people that wanted to go to that location at that time? At seven thirty in the morning, I mean, they, it has to be something they can count on.
They, so it's more that they they, it could be one person, it could be four people. But to Eric's um, example with Summit Cove, they're going, they're not going to work. They're going to the bus stop, which then takes them to to wherever, right?
And the timing would be linked to the bus at the bus stop, I presume.
You'd wanna, you'd wanna request your ride so that you could get to the bus stop in time to catch.
Cause school as well, I, you know, school and work. And I mean, there's, there are a lot of occasions where. So if these got a lot of ridership, could these turn into static lines?
So we um, toured Park City uh, this summer. They have one of the best systems in the country and if you all have, yeah, micro transit systems. And if you all have the time and inclination, I would highly recommend it, cause it was, we learned a lot about it. Um, I think there are a couple of different ways they have approached it, but the technology allows the the system to decide what is the most efficient route for that individual to take and they set the parameters. So for example, if our goal was that no route should take more than thirty minutes to get across the county, there might be incidents where that micro transit ride gives them a ride directly. Or where it brings them to the fixed route, depending on whatever parameters we set for that system. Um, I think there's also a lot of work to be done around the cost of the system. It's really interesting to me that Park City's um, transportation system and micro transit is only a million dollars more than what we're currently spending on the stage. Yeah, I was, and they have very similar geography, very similar miles, very similar starting wages. And so I think there is some work to be done financially as we build this out. Um, to see how we might be able to minimize some of the additional cost and maximize what we're providing to our residents as well.
Mar, for Park City, does that include their in-town system as well?
Um, it doesn't include, my understanding is it only includes what Park City actually offers. So it doesn't include, for example, what their resorts are offering, but the the actual technology does include everybody's routes. So it's, they will connect a resident to, you know, a a ski resort um, transportation system, if that's what's most efficient and all of that information is loaded into their app. Um, I think it's also really interesting to know that some of their highest users are middle school students that are using the system to get to their after-school programs when their parents can't. Another, I think, bonus for us as a community for.
I agree with Jeffrey. I mean, I think Peak Seven's a no-brainer. I also think Summit Cove's a no-brainer, having kids. I also think Dillon Valley's a no-brainer, but I think we stop it there, right? Trying to do too much. Um, I think would be a mistake and and I'm hoping how you could do any of those three without doing all three personally.
I would love to see us target our traditional workforce neighborhoods first. I mean, I think we know we have disproportionately impacted families in Dillon Valley and in Summit Cove. And so my preference is that we start there.
I'd say Peak Seven as well, to a certain extent, but maybe not to the
Happy to chat.
I'd like, I mean, I I think we have some long overdue parity with the summer stage money. You know, this.
I think the other interesting thing about um, considering Peak Seven for the pilot is that it comes down into the Breck Free Ride, which is a really well-established and very regular running, you know? I think we have fifteen-minute service on that portion of the road. So I do think that's something to consider about. It just might give us a lot of information when we're thinking about how, you know, how regularly do we need to provide, does the skeleton system need to be in order for the micro transit to be most efficient? Um, because it's completely different here at the Breck Free Ride than those two other locations. But man, walking through Dillon Valley and Summit Cove both at the peak work hours, you see a ton of workers flooding through there, so. Good school.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Jay, anything?
I think uh, the location selected, the all three are very, I think will give different perspectives on uh, like kind of a test market in in different environments to see uh, which ones prosper the most and why? And and the fact that they are uh, connected differently with different transportation gr- uh, units. And I would be in favor of looking at pursuing all three.
What you got next, boss? Boss one or boss two?
Yeah, Housing Authority. Did you guys receive the goals? Um, we got an email uh, with some short-term goals. There are about seven of them. As far as, do we have any way to put that up or?
Uh, not to put it up quickly, but I can send it and I might even be able to print a copy. I apologize. I didn't get didn't send those to you guys.
No, that's fine. Um, should I just read them off? Do you guys wanna hear what they are?
Right.
Okay, so the short-term goals, those are like two to three years and these from the board. It's branding, software program, complete website redesign. It's, that's kind of the one-stop shop. Um, universal deed restriction. Consistent lottery terms. Agreed upon income calcs. And continue all current tasks, which is like the resale calculations, home buyer education. So I think what we kinda wanna talk about today is, I mean, these are probably the most important for us to get through today. There are also some four to five-year goals and some five-year plus. But I just think it's important if there's anyone who um, you know, feels strongly disagree or strongly agree with any of these, like a couple of them I'm really excited to see on here. Um, the consistent lottery terms and the universal deed restriction, I'm less excited about. I don't know if we'll ever get there to be frank. Yeah, or if we should.
I think the um, consistent or the universal deed restriction it it assumes that all the workforce housing we're building is directed to the same demographic or that same population where that's just not the case. And so I don't know if that would be. Um, I know some of our developers would love a universal deed restriction because it kinda streamlines that and the terms don't change. But I think for a community such as ours that we're working with and trying to um, position each of these projects in different categories, um, having deed restrictions that work for those goals makes sense and maybe that they aren't all the same.
You have a point. I um, I think it's worth looking at though. And because currently even in Breckenridge, we have, we have several different deed restrictions. So, you know, if we could consolidate into three or four deed restrictions that you know, create three or four buckets that work for how would that? It would just, it's quite confusing right now, particularly in the Upper Blue. You know, where the deed restrictions are different between the county and the uh, in the town and um, you know, the real estate community struggles with it, the um, homeowners, developers, et cetera, so.
But how would that work? Would we, would would we change some existing deed restrictions or is it just be going forward?
I don't know. I don't know that we need to get in the weeds. I just think it's worth looking at. I I think it's worth having the experts take a look and a stab at, take a stab at it and maybe it doesn't make sense. I, I mean, your point's valid, you know, maybe it does not make sense, but but maybe there's an opportunity there. Cause it, there are a lot of benefits to it, in my opinion. There's challenges for sure, but I think there are a lot of benefits to it.
This is something that the Housing Authority's been talking about for probably five years, long time. And I think there are pros and cons. I do think there is quite a bit of mistrust right now. And that comes from a place of not understanding the various different deed restrictions, right? And so I think, you know, when folks look at one deed restriction or another, um, there's often confusion. And that confusion leads to a sense of not quite knowing what is happening. And that erodes the trust in the process. So I don't know if it's a common deed restriction, as has been discussed, or if there's a different strategy to think about how we help the public understand all of these differences so that there's not questions. But I do think it is um, certainly from a helping our public engage in the process and feel confident that housing is being distributed fairly and it's all above board. I do think this is an important conversation. And I think I can echo that. That's the same with the lotteries as well. I think that's why it's necessary to have that consistency through all of the lotteries. I know it's going to be.
Lotteries might be easier than
Lotteries might be easier.
You're right.
But I think that that's where we can instill that sense of trust with, you know, a a broad source of all of the community. Um, I think a a big priority for me is um, in addition to those um, uh, agreed upon income calculations, something that we need to best or advise the housing authorities to really think about all the different types of workers that we have in this community. I think one big concern that I've I've witnessed is some of our gig workers, some of our musicians, some of our artists, some of our people who don't make money in a traditional way, that can't really tie their income to quote in, or really can't can't calculate where their income is coming from, cause it comes from a restaurant one week and it comes from a bar that they played the next week. I think that's important for some of our our bigger people who, swaths that have been missed in some of these um, lotteries, deed restrictions, AMI requirements, et cetera.
The one uh, the items that is not on, ones mentioned that I've had experience um, with people that I work with that struggle is just the inconsistencies of the applications. And I think that would be, I would wanna put that pretty high on the priority list personally because there is, you know, a lot of confusion on what do I need to fill out? I fill out this form, but now I need to fill out this form. And in order to do that, I need to do this and oh, but I missed one of them and now I didn't, I'm not eligible. And just to be able to streamline how, if you're, if you're looking for a rental property, it's this. If you're looking to buy a deed restriction, it's that. And try to keep it one, one form, no matter how many pages long it is, just so there's one click and here it is. And I think a lot of that comes back to the website branding, software uh, portions of the priorities of explaining the neighborhoods, this is the process, these are the steps you have to follow. And uh, make the application processes um, less arduous as we can.
Yeah. I think that's huge. It'd be a lot easier to get it in multiple languages too with that. And also, you know, as you're describing the neighborhoods, describing the properties, you know, what what is income restricted and what is not? And there's a ton of, to your point um, to Mars. There's a ton of, you know, misinformation understood, misunderstood information that turns into distrust with the public and uh, you know, around they they, it's hard to understand, you know, the difference between a property that has an income test. It's hard to understand, you know, the difference between a property that has an income test and one that does not. And then how tough the income test really is.
Are we comfortable with the housing authority is doing all they can to explain that to kind of clear up that confusion?
With Cory there.
I think there's more work and focus that can always be done, um, to improve the ability of the public to understand what's happening.
Um, so Carol brought up a really good point and, um, she was talking about sort of along the same lines as Jay of really reaching out to the immigrant community and making sure that the, you know, navigation of the website and that the applications and any information is really, um, able to be read and digested by the, you know, people who need to use this website. And I was wondering with the redesign, if there's any way that we can, um, maybe it would be even someone like who we're currently looking for, for our communications, bilingual communications that would really be integral in the, um, whole redesign of that website. Cause what we don't want to do is to design a website in English and then put everything in Spanish. We just, we know that doesn't work. And so it really would be great if we could, from the very start, have some people who are, you know, users with different language backgrounds and different needs, different cultures. Yeah. Thank you.
A side note, um, High Country Conservation came in today and they were talking about their equity, um, plan. And one of, they've never been able to fill that position. And so this time around, they started by asking folks from the community to help them write the job description and they managed to fill the position. So to your point, Mayor.
Well done. Yes. We're learning. We're very slow, but we're learning.
You know, one, one other thing about the housing authority that we talked about when the housing authority began years ago, was having a clearing house for rentals. And for some reason it's something that just never got off the ground. And I think you could, I think you could level out the cost of rentals in the community. If everybody had an idea of, you know, instead of going to the paper and going here and a friend tells you this, and one place is twenty-five hundred and now there's fifteen hundred. To be able to see all that stuff in front of you, I think will, I think it'll help with rental rates too. I think it'll help drive down some rates as people, you know, pick. If you can see it all and you can pick the cheaper ones rather than just what comes, comes up right away. So I, I would love to eventually have a website that was, that was a rental clearing house.
Yeah. Really good point.
Yeah.
Uh, I did email this list to you guys. So if you want to open it up.
On which, a secret email or the regular one?
It's the one that's password protected from you.
Oh.
In case there's a core request.
Oh. Cat, counsel me. Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. All right. So, um, anything else on the two to three goal, your goals?
No, I'm just one other mention. I often hear requests around the lottery to prioritize folks who have applied multiple times, but not been chosen. So that's another interest, I think, as we talk about our lot, our lotteries that I will want us to weigh.
Yeah. I feel like does that, I mean, I wonder how much that, like that we already take that into account when we're taking into account. People have been here five years or 10 years because we do an extra ball for, do we do it for 10 years or five?
We just did it at five.
Uh, Cory, the 10, 10. And I think that was one of the recommendations of Mountain Dreamers, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. It was 10 years. Yeah.
Just not, you all may and we may not.
Yeah.
Our lotteries.
Yeah.
We'll be talking about it.
Yeah. The lotteries are really tough. We keep trying to modify and make them, um, you know, better. But I feel like the out, the discussions are really difficult as far as those go. And we did get input on the last time from Mountain Dreamers and FERC and I feel like maybe a couple of other places. And yeah, their feedback was not at five years, but at 10 years. So that, that. But always more to consider. Okay. Midterm goals, um, program management, housing helps buy downs. Consistent guidelines, property management division, um, at Summit County Housing Authority and then housing navigation navigator. I'm not sure. That's probably. Is the navigator.
And a couple of different discussions around navigation, um, in general and similar, or sort of taking that idea from what FERC does, you know, and what Building Hope does for navigating people through healthcare and, and whatnot, something similar to that. And I, Dave, I don't know if you'd agree, but I think with discussions within the board, I think that's sort of been elevated um, in importance and not a firm decision on should that be bodies? Like, you know, a person or two people that do that, or should the current housing authority staff be, all be trained so that they can help folks navigate the complexity of housing in Summit County?
I think that was one of the reasons that, that task force that Rick had been talking about was that each, because of our, because our programs are so different and our deed restrictions are currently so different, that opens up the need for potentially having somebody from town of Breck, somebody from Summit County on, on loan. I, you know, and that kind of becomes a little bit unwieldy and inefficient too. So that's the downside of that.
You know, um, something maybe to think about is to organize some of this stuff by basin instead of by town and county, you know, like Upper Blue Basin, Lower Blue Basin, 10 Mile, you know, and because that's where the municipality and the county, you know, lines get blurred and, and it's so confusing. And there's similarities to the needs in each of the basins. I, I don't want to say there's, they're all the same. They're not. But I mean, there's similarities in each basin. So maybe that's something to take a stab at too, is to, to look at organizing by basins. And, you know, and that way you could have people from municipalities participate in their basin, you know, have a little, maybe a guiding board or who knows how you do it, but it seems to me that it's maybe basin by basin might make sense.
Also wonder, I, the consistent guidelines and, you know, consistent lottery and consistent deed restrictions. I feel like is very difficult, but I, what I'm not sure we do a great job with is just providing the information consistently. Like what is the Wellington neighborhood deed restriction? What is the Vista Point deed restriction? And if we.
It's a few of them.
Yeah. Well, that's, that is part of the reason that it gets complicated. But you know, I feel like part of the reason you need a navigator is because the information isn't readily available. Um, so maybe we can go partway with.
In my mind, that, I, that feels very much like it should be part of that branding website rebrand is that, that is imperative to have all of that information, even though it's a lot of information available 24/7 online. Because a lot of our residents are also looking at this information from different points in the day, at any point, you know? And so I think that that's, that starts with the website and then, you know, could also probably serve as a guide to our navigators regularly.
Be nice if you could have a, like the assessor's website has the GIS link and you can just click on the house. Cause it is going to be, I mean, where we have maintenance clause, you know, people just opting in to a different deed restriction. So it is going to be good for them.
But again, isn't that up to the housing authority to put that together?
Well, yes.
Should we tell them to?
Yeah, let's do it.
I mean, I do think I would appreciate some opportunities for the housing authority to convene what I would call some broader planning conversations. You know, as we all become more resource constrained, whether that's land or water or roundabouts or whatever it is. We are all going to benefit from each other's projects. And so I think it's in all of our interests to figure out how some of these larger projects move forward. Um, and it may take some, um, you know, untraditional partnerships to leverage water or sewer or whatever the infrastructure is we're talking about it. So I would down the road, you know, I think we all have to continue to talk about how collaborative we want the housing authority to be. But certainly in many places, the housing authorities are conveners of some of these more difficult conversations. And I would love to see our housing authority have that ability as well.
That's a complicated one. I do think that's on the five year goal, the development management. I think that's exactly what they're talking about is kind of a. Right. What you're saying, which is sure, we have these projects that are in the town of Breck or whatever, but we're getting close to build out of a lot of those projects. So if we want to continue moving forward, then it's going to be a multi-town or county or maybe even basin partnership would be really cool. We'll have to see then.
I think even having this, the housing authority in on those conversations is not on the five year plan. That's sort of an immediate thing. I mean, as, as we're looking at these larger projects, the housing authority needs to stand up as an entity in the community, that an entity that is backed by the community and has the goodwill of the community behind it and the, the health of the community in mind. And to show up at council meetings and say, hey, look, this is what we're trying to put together. You've got to, you know, stop with the NIBBY stuff and this is what you need to do to get this through for your community. I, I think they need to become almost a political force of their own. And quicker than five years, quicker than years.
They, yeah, I, I mean, I ideally, I don't disagree at all, but I just, we've, we've got to get it, get some strong consistency there first, I think. To have, so they have credibility as well.
It's been a long road.
I just want to, like, I really appreciate this conversation. I think Dave probably does too, as board members for the housing authority. And we've heard other members say that in the past, the board really hasn't demanded much of the housing authority and hasn't given them good support or good direction. I think right now the board is all together in believing that we need to make the housing authority exactly what you all are describing. And so I hope the other councils will have similar conversations and give that same direction to their board members. Because the, if you read the IGA, there was high expectations for the housing authority when that was established. And it's not doing really, you know, it's probably doing 10% of what was in that original IGA. So this is the time to really try to elevate it.
All right. Any final comments on the housing authority?
It'll solve all of our problems, right?
Of course.
Always have hope.
Good way to end it. All right. So the final thing was pay as you throw. And, um, I forwarded you guys the whole email. So you now have our, um, update from Jesse as far as how pay as you throw has, uh, been rolled out over the last few years. You know, we adopted it in August, 2022, but it really didn't, um, begin to be, rolled out to residential customers until October, 2023. So only about six months ago, not even. Um, and then no later than December, a hundred percent of the residents in Breckenridge, um, were served with the pay as you throw model. I think the really interesting thing was that the group accounts ended up being complicated. Um, there was definitely no one size fits all. You know, suggestions made. It seemed like they needed a lot of one-on-one time, just helping, um, kind of figure out what was going to work for that group. And so the residential rollout seemed to be actually less, you know, more painless than we thought because anyone who got a smaller bin actually saw their prices drop. Anyone who kept the sixty-four, um, liter, I think it is, is that right?
Gallon.
Gallon.
You're European.
I'm European.
Oh, no.
The sixty-four gallon trash can, it stayed the same. And then if you've got the biggest trash can, your costs went up. And so that was pretty self-explanatory to people and most people were able to be successful. Um, and no one was able to really tap into the financial, um, any kind of assistance because part of that financial assistance was that you had to try to go down to the smaller trash can before you could get the assistance and you had to be 80% AMI. And everyone who did that was then seeing a reduction in their bill. And so, um, as far as residents go, we didn't see anyone use the financial assistance. However, um, the commercial, as far as, um, you know, we haven't actually gotten into the commercial customers yet. April 1st is when, um, I don't, I think it's 50%. Well, June 1st, it says 50% of the, um, commercial customers are supposed to be on pay as you throw. But, um, what we're seeing there is that it's complicated and sort of more expensive um, than we initially thought for them, for some of those places to be able to have the adequate space for recycling and trash. And so while we originally rolled out, I think it was a $5,000. Um, you know, they could come and get a grant for $5,000 to help reconfigure their area. We're actually considering increasing that grant to 10,000 because the capital improvements um, for enclosures have just been more expensive than, um, we originally thought.
Tap on the grants. We're not.
Yeah. Yeah. And, um, and really we haven't given very much money from, um, from that fund yet, but we also, I think there's only been eighteen applications received totaling $5,000. But that's up until now, but that's because mostly those are the people with the simple fixes have already been able to apply for the grants and do something. The more complicated fixes we expect to come this year. And that's why we're looking at potentially increasing the amount of money people can, um,
Would, would you say that the reasoning is because, or one of those reasonings that make it more complicated here is because of lack of space and availability?
Jesse?
It's that plus there's conflicting development code around required parking stations or setbacks. So it just, it's a case by case.
Okay.
Basis.
Just so you guys are aware, we're hoping to have, um, our pay as you throw ordinance on the consent calendar in late March, early April. I'm afraid we're a little behind with our lawyer short, shortages.
Plenty of them.
Shortage for lawyers, no?
And then, so you guys would adopt the ordinance and then would, what's the rollout schedule like? Is it like six months after?
We're hoping to match what you guys did.
Okay.
Yeah. Same timeframe. And so Ashley Brewbaker, our sustainability coordinator has been meeting with the haulers to make sure that they were comfortable with the window of time that they would have between spring and rollout.
Happen for them by now, right? After a couple. One of the things that, uh, we noticed from the residential side was the, was being able to work with the haulers directly to offset any cost of new, new containers delivery, uh, so that the end user, the resident never actually saw a bill for, uh, a recycling container delivery or a smaller container delivery. Uh, was I think very positive and kind of a big deal on the residential side. That made the residential part portion such an easy rollout. And, uh, I think we got a grant. I didn't know it, but I didn't know existed, but we got a trash can grant, uh, that helped us offset some of those costs. And then the haulers worked with us. And I do think that that's important. Uh, it, it seems like such a tiny piece, but it just makes it painless for the end user.
Trash can grants.
They charge you for that delivery to switch out.
Oh, trust me.
Yes, but we will go there.
Yeah. I think another challenge that maybe we could all work together in the Upper Blue Basin. Um, I'm not sure all the property managers have complete buy-in on this, which also affects their knowledge of this. You know, I, some of the bigger HOA complexes, we might have to go to their annual meetings and talk to the owners and have the owners put pressure on the management companies. Or if we can somehow get buy-in from some of the property managers. I know some of the associations that I'm involved with, I'm less than impressed with the buy-in and the, and the knowledge of.
It's surprising.
This program.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yep. They will let me know what I miss, but appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Your power of attorney has your gun.
Very sure about that.
Want to think about it?
Turn and look pretty.
Do what you're good at, right, Dave? Your strengths.
Did you guys have any questions about, like, I think we gave you sort of the, what worked and what didn't work quite as well. But Jessie's the expert and she's here to answer anything you want to know.
I think one of our challenges is trying to find a payment assistance program that is workable from a, in, you know, an internal standpoint, administrative standpoint, but also applications for people. And we were anxious to hear what your, how yours had gone for residential.
Yeah. Would you change what we did for residential? I mean, it was kind of interesting that, you know, just reading it, like, no one ended up really being able to qualify. And I was just curious if you thought there were, there was anyone who you wished they could qualify, but because of the parameters we set.
Well, the, the, the reason why we had hardships was there, there was an initial fear that prices would go up, even if you tried to downsize, because prices did not do that. Nobody could qualify. So it wasn't that they didn't qualify based on AMI or whatever. It was that their prices did not do what we anticipated them to do. They actually did what they were supposed to do. And so that, that's a win in the fact that nobody had to apply for hardship. On the flip side, we're seeing hot, greater hardship on the business side due to, due to the capital improvements of having to continue to screen their enclosure and meet, meet the development code side of this in order to add recycling, you know, that, that's expensive to, to build a enclosure in Breckenridge, so.
I guess you could also argue though, that the large producers of waste are some of our commercial properties though, too.
And, and what we're seeing, we've actually tweaked a little bit of our own commercial enclosure program downtown. We're, we're getting rid of some of the compactors in the enclosures and replacing it with trash. And we're seeing, we're not at a point yet where we've reduced the trash containers, but we think that we could actually reduce the amount of trash in some of the containers downtown by ensuring that we have the adequate recycling. So just using that as an anecdote, you know, again, it's, you're still generating the same amount of material. You're just recycling it versus trashing it all. And so there's a, there's a sorting bit, but the, the capital improvement side, in order to maintain screening is definitely pushing the costs a little bit higher. The only other thing I would say in terms of reporting is right now your haulers report to the scrap on an annual basis. This is related to designated disposal, not pay as you throw. But we want to get good reporting from the haulers. And right now they can only report at the county level. So they take, they aggregate all of their data across Summit County. They report to the scrap and then that's the information that we have. We ask them questions, the scrap asks them questions like, how many residential units do you have? And they might say something like 10,000. That's exaggerating because they wouldn't want me to disclose that. So let's call it 10,000. In our ordinance, we have residential, group accounts, valet service. So they report 10,000, they don't report all those nuances. We need that nuance. So moving forward, if you guys in your ordinance could capture better reporting requirements, it will allow us to tie our reporting to what they're doing for, for you all in order to get better data. So that's something, I didn't include that in the memo, but came up with that.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, it's really important because we're not asking the right questions right now.
Yeah.
Haulers have, since when we met with them, they were very, they're very protective of that data. I think that's kind of the challenge is how, how they want to keep that close to their chest.
But in asking, I mean.
And stuff, yep.
You know, I got asked a question via the manager yesterday about, like, what is the percentage of people that downsized? Well, we're starting with really bad baseline data. So I could give some assumptions and deduce a few things because one hauler disclosed to us one thing and then the other didn't. And I was able to, you know, logically think through that. But we're starting with bad baseline data. So I can't give really good numbers about how successful this program is.
I do feel like the haulers have been pretty good partners in this with us. And so while they may be resistant at first, I think we've had good success with their participation on most points. So.
Residential for sure.
Yeah, residential. So maybe they'll be slow to warm up to it, but maybe if we ask them again, we'll have more success.
There are a lot more challenges with commercial because we're really not going to reduce trash commercially. Because you're right, I mean, commercial, certain segments, restaurant industry creates a tremendous amount of trash. And until we can figure out composting on a commercial level and where to stage it, where to store it and who's going to haul it and all of that, it's heavy, it's hard to haul, it's hard to handle. And till we figure that out, where, I don't know that we are going to reduce that much in the commercial. We will reduce, but you know, I think we'll see the significant changes and significant progress when we're to the point where we can figure out composting. And, and that's, gets some, community by community really. Cause I mean, I know for us, we're going to have to really rethink our enclosures. But it's important, I think there's, there's a real desire to get that done, I think. And it's, it's just a process. But that's when we'll see huge, huge change, I think.
We met with, with AC3 and I brought up the compost piece. That's the real change in trash and what you're hauling.
That's the real change, what you're hauling.
Yeah, no, I definitely agree. I think that that's going to be the biggest change. And once we do that, again, it'll all be solved, you know?
Because you're solving problems, right? Any last thoughts, missionaries?
Miss me?
My gosh. Serious.
Be gentle to council, I'm going to say that right now.
Super nice name. I let him ramble on and tell jokes.
The public wants to hear from me and shut me down.
The door is from the inside.
Hey, I have a quick question. What do you guys, people have asked me this, as far as Keystone goes, how are you guys going to collect on the services that the county, county provides for Keystone? Cops, plowing, stuff like that? In, if you're not getting the revenue, is, is there, is there a mechanism or a formula?
If, but 90 days, we continue all services for 90 days and then they're going to have to negotiate everything.
Okay, so.
But there are additionally, there's statutory things that we are required, like police service, we are required to provide regardless of what. Yeah.
Just 911.
It's 911, so.
Not noise violation, stuff like that, serious stuff, sheriff still has to go. But a bunch of other stuff, they're going to have to just pick up on their own.
Yeah.
Um, they're looking for new town manager. I don't know if you're interested.
Do they drug test?
Yeah, I think they have a lot still to figure out and we're just allowing them to take as much.
They'll be like, kind of start this this summer, after 90.
Thanks for having us.
This was great, thank you.
It was hell, the roads are pretty bad.
Take some snacks before you leave.
We drove the hybrid, okay?
I think we should take the five minute break, so.
Oh, nice, another addition.
Are we ready?
We are muted.
About fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Oh, I thought we were doing those.
I don't believe there is a mobility update.
Look at how pleased he looks back there.
So micro transit was your time. I hope you're.
You feel like that's enough?
Okay.
Kelly, I will say, I know we don't have a mobility update, but tomorrow there is a summit stage board meeting, and so they will be discussing micro transit there, and Matt will be our representative. I think our hope is that the board will decide to look for a vendor and have that vendor help inform where the pilot areas should be and where they could be successful.
That'd be great. Have a third party, just an outside. Opinion. I'm happy with that. You guys happy?
Okay, Jesse, sustainability.
Right, great. I don't have anything else besides what was in the packet, but I understand there were a couple of questions that council member Sade had, and so one of which was how many of the builders and contractors attended the construction and demolition workshop? And we had about forty-five. I don't have the official sign-in list, but it was very well attended. It was at the end of the day. And then they went right into their builder happy hour, so I think we timed it well. And it was a good, it was a good conversation, and I would classify it as cautious optimism with some really good feedback to the, to the groups, so. That was one question, and then I believe she had some questions around the opt-in provisions of the plastic pollution bill. How we're forcing that right now. We are basically enforcing that through educational outreach and then auditing, so anytime we either get feedback from somebody that this happened at a restaurant, or we happen to be at a place where we noticed that straws were given out without requested, you know, without being requested, things like that, then we offer, you know, an educational reminder. The opt-in provisions will be going away on July first, and those items will be going away on July first, and so we haven't felt the need to like enforce with the, the financial penalties that are outlined in the provisions. Because that's, you know, we're gonna have a whole nother round of like changes come July first, the way that the bill was written, so that's how we're approaching it right now. And I think that was the extent of her questions. But otherwise, I'm happy to answer questions about that, or anything else that was in the memo.
Questions for Jesse?
Clear.
Pretty good?
Yeah.
Sounds like that's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Housing and childcare. No minutes, but maybe a update or no update?
We don't have any minutes or anything to update, so let's stop and save.
Any questions?
No. I think Lori maybe was going to mention, and I hate to be the one to mention it, I did tell Kelly. Unfortunately, Gorman has been notified by the Alta group, which manages a bunch of multifamily apartment rentals. That they have trademarked that name, Alta, and that Gorman has to cease and desist the use of it. So they internally brainstormed, they came up with Verde Vista's as a name. But we'll chat with.
Thank, I thought you were gonna say Chantilly.
That was the second option.
Cool.
But we'll chat about it a little bit more internally, but just wanted to let you know that we are going to have to change the name. It is too bad.
Forgot about that one. Exactly. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cory. Do we have an open space update? Okay. Mark?
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, so we had a BOSSAC last night, so Ann will be here in two weeks to give a more thorough lowdown on that, but just wanted to update you on a couple of things. One is the Little Daisy associated with that, the lease for the tenants that are exist, there right now. We're gonna be going with doing a one-year lease with them. And the reason for that, we, we understand there's a desire to have a longer lease term. But if we go with anything longer than one year, we need to go through two readings with the town council. Right now, we're scheduled to close in another week or two. So what we'd like to do is just do a lease for the next year, and then the next few months, we'll work on a more long-term arrangement to come back to you and go through the two readings. Yeah, so.
Well, thanks, Ed. I, I know this was kind of a little bit out of the wheelhouse of what we've done in the past. I appreciate the staff's effort on all this, so thank you.
Yeah, Ann's done an amazing job doing all the work on, well, we, we gotta do a new septic system out there.
Yeah.
Some stuff like that.
And hopefully, we, you know, hopefully, the people out there do that for a living, they can we can have them do it.
Yeah, yeah, just all the going through the county to get the approvals and extension and all that.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jeffrey, that's, it's important piece property.
Yeah, and then the other thing is the BOSSAC did agree last night, they took action to move their meetings to the third Monday of the month, starting in May. So they'll be doing, from then on, we'll usually have that gap of a week between the meeting and then when they come to, we, we report to council.
And my apologies for not showing up. My flight was delayed three times yesterday, and I know I promised BOSSAC Jake, and he just did it online, so that was, I'm sure.
He was there.
Classic disappointment for everybody.
Thanks.
All right, committee reports there are none. Anything to add to that?
Uh, no, I'll just say we did have a social equity advisory meeting, but we did not get the minutes in the packet, so you'll have them at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Financials, please.
Oh, goodie.
Pam, Dave? Here's your department.
Yes, it's the math teams.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mayor, Pro-Tam and Council. So we have our end-of-year report for sales tax. Pam's gonna walk through. I just wanted to highlight the first page for you. If you look at the comparison to the prior year, if you look at twenty-twenty-three, it compared to twenty-four, it looks really low in twenty-three. Part of it is how the accounting was done in prior years, where two months were booked in the month of December, a month reversed in January, and it made January then look, or lower than what would be. And so we're meeting with the auditors tomorrow. We're gonna smooth that out, if you will, so it'll have a more normalized view. So your year-to-date versus year-to-date prior year will look normal, and you will have a better sense of how we're doing. Otherwise, you're gonna think we're really doing much, much better, when it's really just the accounting side. That make sense? Okay.
And that, just to confirm, or restate what you just said, December sales collections go into, are classified in January, and that throws off.
Yeah, we're a month behind, so before, they were booking two months in the month of December. And so we would always be looking like we're favorable throughout the year, because one of those months would reverse in January. And so you would not have a normal January, if you will, because of the reversal of the accrual. And so we're not gonna do it that way anymore, because we wanna have a year-over-year comparison, which makes sense. So we're normalizing out the year, is what we're doing.
So January, or December's tax collections will go into December?
Well, they'll be, they'll go, they'll still go into January, but we won't book two months in December.
Explain this to me tomorrow? I talked to him during the break.
We won't book two, we will not book two months in December. We will make sure it works correctly for all twelve months of the year. That's, that's what we're doing.
You understood accruing, right?
Got it, understood. Versus cash basis, yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
So in your packet, you had the report for January. The executive summary has the month of January, which again is sales tax from December booked into January. And so the month of January came favorable in the excise fund versus our twenty-twenty-four budgeted revenues, seven hundred thousand. Sales tax is currently ahead point four over our year-to-date budget. Accommodations taxes point one, and real estate transfer tax came in flat in comparison to last, to last year and budget. As far as our net taxable sales by industry, that is our full year twenty-twenty-three, and it came behind year-over-year by one point four two percent. If we just looked at the month of December, December came behind by seven point three three percent. All of our sectors were slightly behind in comparison of December of twenty-twenty-two. Our retail in town came behind by two point five nine percent in comparison with previous year, and retail out of town was ahead by two point six seven in comparison with the previous year. Real estate transfer tax is flat in comparison with twenty-twenty-three for the month of January, and is flat in comparison with budget. I did add the BTO report as well, and as you can see, January is trending similar to the last months of twenty-twenty-three, where our occupancy is showing higher, however, rate is lower. And then I also added the rent by zones, if you have any questions. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Pam, or Dave, or Tracy? No? Everybody gets it?
Got it, of course.
All right. Thank you guys very much.
Did you, I think Tracy had a financial report.
So we, first of all, I wanna let you know, we received our federal report card today on twenty-twenty-two, so we got a good certificate of achievement for excellent financial reporting, so that's something that's a part of the audit process to review for the year. We submitted to GFPA, and I just wanna say thank you to Tracy, Pam, and the entire accounting team, because it's a, it's what you wanna get, so. On the, on the financials, we have a year, a twenty-twenty-three year-end review closure. And then on twenty-twenty-four, we're trying to elevate it a level, if you will, and just to highlight variances that are going on, because I know we have twenty funds for revenue and expense, there's a lot of information. So we added that piece for twenty-four to make it a little bit easier, just to cover the highlights that happened for the month. So that's something new that we added this month that Tracy can walk through with you.
All right, so thank you. So in the packet, we have the unofficial final statement for December for the income statement. We've got the auditors in this week, who will be doing, issuing the credited comprehensive financial statements, once we've gone through that review. So as we look at how we closed out twenty-twenty-three, we had favorability in overall funds for revenue of around about sixteen point seven million extra revenue. There are some variance explanations that highlight out some of the, the major revenue excess that we had. On the flip side, we also had a lot of favorability in the expenditures, where we had under expense of just shy of twenty million, so that extra thirty-six million basically rolls over into the new fund balances for twenty-twenty-four. So that, I'm gonna skip over to the January financial statements. When you look at the, the summary by quarter, what we consider is the actuals for January, budget for February and March, so you're really looking at a true quarter over quarter for the, and then it rolls up for the year. Favorability for January, at this point, we had about one point nine million favorability in revenue. The highlights of it are one point six million for taxes, and that's more of a budget phasing that we will anticipate kind of rolling out and softening throughout the year. An extra hundred and seventeen thousand for stop-loss, and that was primarily for twenty-twenty-three reimbursements that we, that were received in January, that was not budgeted for. Water rents, we're showing a favorability of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. That's really for budget phasing. It's not impacting because of the rate increase, because this is income that we had received for the December billing that was received in January. For expenditures, we had favorability of an underspend of two point one million for January, primarily driven by just shy of a million dollars for SIR, so we had that budgeted for January, actually get paid this month. So we'll see that really net out. In minor capital, we have favorability in our expenditures of just over a million, and that's just primarily because of the garage fund.
I understood that.
That, that's really supply chain of vehicles that we had planned to come in have not been available yet. And a hundred and sixty-six thousand, that is really the, how we annualize out merit increases throughout the year and calculate it on our payroll costing sheets. It shows us a favorability of a hundred and sixty-six grand, but it will really gradually net to zero as merit increases roll out throughout this year. So that's the January financials kicking off the start of twenty-twenty-four.
Notice that we're doing very well in the cemetery fund, like double the prospective resident.
In revenue?
Yeah.
I like the new graph on, in the quarter review.
Yeah, it's helpful.
Any questions here?
Thanks for all your work.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations on the award.
The report card.
Sweet.
Heard of the auditors for you guys, don't worry about it.
I had to get an A on mine.
They had nothing but nice things to say about you guys.
That's cool.
All right, county attorney update, Kirsten.
Um, so I think that this is on here related to state legislation. And in the packets, you have a memo where I tried to highlight just some of the bills. Of course, there are many. And the town legislative policy is narrowly focused on bills that have, have the potential of an impact on town operations. Are there, how do you want me to proceed? Do you think, do you want me to recap the memo, or do you wanna just take questions?
I think we can just take questions, unless anyone needs an explanation or a recap of the memo. Is it fine? We just do questions? Yeah, okay. Kirsten, is there anything that you think, that you wanted to specifically highlight, or is that fine?
I guess, you know, we talked about not spending a lot of time on the bills that don't impact us, so I don't wanna take up time doing that, but I do think it's worth noting that many of our concerns about the land use bill that was circulated last session are not a concern right now for the town of Breckenridge, because the mandatory provisions on ADUs and transit-oriented communities, as well as parking minimums, the prohibitions of parking minimums. Those bills apply to jurisdictions within a metro planning organization like Dr. Cog, and we're not in that, but we're still watching those. And then, you know, this session, last session, I had never in my entire career seen anything like it. This session feels more normal. For example, the land use bill related to regional housing needs assessments. There were kind of dueling drafts between Senator Roberts and the governor's office, and then Senators Kirkmeier and Zenzinger. And it's been so collaborative, now there's one bill moving forward, and it's just a ton more stakeholder input. It's nice. It feels more, more normal, so to speak, for state legislation. And then I guess just for all of you, if you wanna see everything that CML, as our lobbyists, local government are tracking, you know, of course, you can see the bill tracker on their website, if you ever wanna stay up to date with what's going on. I think there was a hearing on the ADU bill today, too. So those, those are some highlights.
Hey, on the SDR commercial property taxation bill, I, I read this thing. What, is the cliff, is the cliff notice, it's just lingering, languishing in committee?
So that's another one where now there's two, two drafts.
Yeah.
So the Hanson draft has been around for quite some time, and that's the one that has drawn so much ire from everybody, including our community, because of some of the provisions in there, and the layering on of, you know, what local jurisdictions have already done, and the possibility of the state coming in behind. Then there's another draft that is, is now been introduced, which talks about taxation, depending on the number of operations. So if it's your, if it's your primary residence or your second home, you likely wouldn't be subject to tax, taxation, but if it, if there's more than a couple, then you, the proposal is to impose some sort of commercial taxation, but right now, you're right, it stalled out for, I'm guessing, you know, at some point, one bill only will proceed, and then I know Hanson, his got delayed in committee, and then he pulled it to make amendments, and we haven't seen it reintroduced.
If the second one, the one that, you know, with multi-homes, like, time-wise, when could that possibly be debated, discussed?
Well, we'll make sure that we're watching to see when it gets assigned to committee for a hearing. There's no telling. It just depends on when they feel ready, and they've gotten all their input when they sign up for hearing, and so I, I didn't check today, but I don't think it's been scheduled yet.
Kirsten, is that a House bill or a Senate bill? I forget. The second one.
That is a.
Little place in the islands.
No spill.
Yeah, and that is actually really important to know, because things are gonna sail through the House. But yeah, that's a House. The party in Shannon.
It's in the, I don't know.
Yeah.
It has that on HB.
I mean, I think it's all on hold right now. When Hanson, when Hanson pulled it himself to amend it, then that tells me we need to pause. Let's wait and see what he brings back. If the committee had paused it, I think that would have been different, so. We'll see what happens with that one, and the other one just seems to be languishing right now. It's not.
Yeah, that one was just introduced, like, less than a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. So it hadn't been assigned yet, so. I'm okay. You know.
Wait and see.
And I, you know, I do think, and I've had some discussions with Kirsten, that when we see the revision from Hanson on the first bill, if it looks like it's gonna start to, you know, if they're scheduled a hearing, and it's gonna, then, you know, if, if it's something that we think is, is, you know, is not positive for us, and it's threatening tourism, and it's threatening our, you know, rental business and, and everything else we do here, yeah, I think we should speak out. I, I don't think we should wait. I, I really hope that we can, and we might have to do a, you know, kind of a, I don't know how we would do it legitimately, but an off, off-scheduled, some kind of a vote to, to determine whether we come out publicly, I guess, but I think we need to stop sitting on the fence and come out publicly.
Right, right now, we're not really sitting on the fence, because we don't know even what the fence is.
Yeah, there's not, exactly.
You know.
Correct, because the one bill that, that the community spoke out so loudly against
is not.
right before the hearing, it, it, you know, the, the author pulled it for amendment, so we have nothing to really analyze right now on the first bill. But when we do, if it's determined that it's not a good bill, I, I really think that we should speak out as a body.
I, I would like to find out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jeffrey. Just let me restate that. We should, we should come out with a public position.
Yeah. I, you know, I talked to some of the property You know, I talked to some of the property management people, the one in particular. And I I just was woefully ignorant of the finances of it. I would love to find out what it actually means, like like in other words, I would like to pick a, pick a home, find out exactly what their tax burden would increase and then find out how many days it'd have to rent it over eighty nine to defray that cost. And just to find out exactly how onerous and how how, you know, much it would infringe on their their ability to do it. I I have no idea.
I can tell you, as it was written before, it was devastating.
It was.
Yes.
And you did the, you did the math and all that?
Ninety days, that's the winter season, so we wouldn't have any rentals all summer.
Right, except if they didn't mind eating that, if they didn't mind eating the the added tax burden. How, what my question is, how many extra days would they have to rent it over eighty nine to to make up the difference?
And Jeffrey, I think that's a great point. Once we see this revised version of the bill, we can see not only how it impacts our community members, but also what it'll do to our own finances, what we'd have to do with our fees. So I think that's, I'm completely in agreement with you, Dick, to see what the next version looks like and then take it from there.
Yeah, act quickly if it's is, if it's as threatening as the first version was.
Okay.
So that that's all.
But I think to, so once the next version comes out, I think what we should do is the first step should be that we should probably distribute the whole bill to all of council since we're obviously very interested in this.
Distribute the whole bill with a summary.
Yeah, with a.
Maybe a CML summary or some kind of summary.
But then I think the other side of that is there's a lot of interest and we've talked about this before, but just to have some data to help us understand, to really make that decision because otherwise, just talking about ninety days and devastating, it's very hard to know, would it really be devastating? So I think any kind of data that we can have to support how much of a financial impact that'd be both to the homeowner and to the town. And I think that then the next step also that we have to discuss is if we support or don't support that, what, you know, how do we feel about the bedroom fee? And whether we would have to back off on that because I think there's a lot of nuance to what we've already done that we would have to reconsider.
Which is a huge question. We either we would have to reconsider or we're forced to reconsider.
Yeah.
So, and that's huge because that money has gone a long, long way in our housing.
Well, and also if they, if they increase the property tax, you know, what do we, we get like ten percent of property tax where the fee is something a little bit more in our coffers, so yeah.
Yeah.
But again, what Kelly just said, I would like to know the actual formulaic how it works, how, what, you know, what, if they rented a hundred and five days, would that, would that pay the the extra burden?
There are a lot of moving parts because they're different sized properties, they rent for different amounts of money, their property taxes are different, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not a, it's not a linear type formula, it's, but I mean, I'm sure there's some averages that.
Okay.
I think, you know, my, my only comment is any bill that has a number of days in it will go up against, will be contradictory to the DMP. Which is a destination management plan of kind of even out those bumps. So if you, if we have any sort of days in there, it's a make our highs higher and our lowers low, which is contrary to what we want as a community. And that, that's just my two cents.
That's a great point.
Great point, Jeffrey.
People confuse us. People confuse us.
Same thing.
But with its numbers, I always think of you, Jeffrey.
All right, anything else?
Well, I do, I guess it really is from the experience I had last session. I I would suggest or recommend and see what you think of this. If, to the, your point of acting fast. I, because the entire body wants to weigh in and because I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense to like call a special meeting or something like that. Maybe the idea would be a letter which we could send it, even if the bill gets introduced and is going to hearing, we could wait until a follow up council meeting and, you know, author the letter from council.
Well, let's see how bad it looks.
Yeah.
Let's just see what it looks like. I I don't think we need to predetermine, but the concept of acting more quickly, I think it sounds like we're all in agreement on, so that's good. Provided it's, it's, you know, threatening as the previous.
Okay, sounds good. I don't have anything else on that.
Anything else? All right. I think we are ready for our golf fees discussion.
Right. Mayor Pro Tim, Town Council, good afternoon. This afternoon is I wanted to introduce everyone to our new golf and Nordic manager, Grant Johnson.
All right, buddy.
For many, many years, greenskeeper. Seventeen years ago, I don't, long time.
It was in the nineties.
Yeah, nineties, oh, sorry. Before college and after college, yeah. But anyway, we're super excited to have Grant and excited to be here. Thanks for having us today. Just a brief, a couple of brief highlights from the memo is as is in there, Errol and I did a lot of work on this back in November and December, actually, we were hoping to come to you a lot sooner than this, but we did do a lot of deep diving into the fees. Tea time utilization, residency status, so forth and so on. We, our, our goals in the, in what's before you is value for our customers and base and appropriately appropriately based tea times for locals, for our local enthusiasts, which you all know was an issue for us a few years back. We think, Errol and I think, and I think Grant has now had an opportunity to review this, that this is us putting our best foot forward. It's very similar to what has been successfully done at the golf club for over thirty years. We think we've created a little, some minor tweaks that have created some value. And most importantly, we feel that this will get us to our approved budget from the fall. So does anyone have any questions?
That's great, Kevin, thanks.
Could you review the definition of resident again for us?
A resident?
Breckenridge resident.
Breckenridge resident, town proper, owner or business owner?
Full, how about fractional ownership? Is that an owner?
No.
Spelled out in there anywhere?
That's, that's a policy that I believe you guys wanted us to put in place.
Yeah.
Maybe a year ago now?
Yeah, it's been a couple.
Two years ago?
I think that needs to be in writing somewhere, right? I don't know.
Okay.
But just so it's clear.
Okay.
Because that's a lot of numbers that come up here for day use often.
Yes.
And if if the fractional works to get residency, that's going to be a real problem.
Okay.
So I think that really needs to be clearer and 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 in writing somewhere.
Okay.
Anything else?
Sure.
I had a couple of questions, mostly because I'm not in this world and I get a lot of questions on it, so I was hoping you, you guys have such a huge product mix. And just trying to understand some of the idiosyncrasies of the difference between eighteen holes and an internet prepay for, like, what was the difference between those two?
So the internet prepaid, prepaid rate is booked online anytime. You don't have, it's not within the four day window, but there's specific times of each day that you can actually book that rate. That's the cheapest way to play a full eighteen holes. Basically full pop, it's a discount of ten dollars off of the eighteen hole walking rate. So it'd be like you're coming out here in two months, you want to play and you can prepay this rate online.
Of total uh, what do they call them? Tea times are 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 available for prepay?
It's, it's less than fifty percent.
And is there, and is there a certain amount of, if there's fifty percent left, what percent of that is, is there a percent of that fifty percent reserved for resident?
Yes.
Tea times and certain percentage for just four days prior tea times?
As, as we were doing this, because the the utilization ties in so much with the fees. We have increased our local utilization or availability, I should say, by approximately seventeen, eighteen percent. Over what we've done before, so we are close this year to about fifty percent of our tea times will be within that four day window and reserved for local players.
Record nerd resident.
Rec resident and Summit County. So that's what we, that's what we've always referred to as local.
And which the Summit County definition?
Is.
Same, but just some.
Yeah, it's. You, Summit and Park, second, upper blue, Summit Park resident. Validated with your driver's license.
And is there a, a certain number of free internet prepaid tea times available for the resident? So I have my father in law coming into town for a weekend in September and I want to make sure, as a resident, I want to make sure to, they will get that. Are there any slots available for a internet prepaid for a resident?
Yes, we do up to eight people or eight tea times, so two foursomes that somebody that lives here, that's the bring a friend rate. So you've got the bring a friend rate, nine holes or eighteen holes, so if you want to play eighteen, you can, you know, if my brother and sister in law and nephew are coming out, I could in that, I could outside of the booking window, book a foursome for us to play. And you can do that twice a year basically as a local.
And do you, as the resident, pay the one oh five or do you pay the fifty? I'm looking at the high season rate. If you're doing a book a friend, do you pay the book a friend rate or do you pay the?
You pay the resident rate and then your three friends pay to bring a friend or family members or?
That's great. This, I feel like you guys did an amazing job putting together a package that is geared to the resident. And in lieu of the resident sediment survey we have of not disenfranchising our second homeowners and saying that they're in a different class than they've been in the past. And I I think that was a great judgment call and I really applaud you on your efforts and thank you. And thanks for the clarifications.
Yeah, you bet.
First of all, great grooming this year at the Nordic Center.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And snowmaking.
And the Nordic Center snowmaking? And what, and I don't see it here, but are you guys, have you, are we changing like the men's league and the women's league criteria for who gets to book early? I thought we, we're kind of talking about county residents, is that, is that kind of going forward?
We're, we are going to go back to the previous policies, rules, guidelines that that were in place for multiple years, so it's, it's we haven't completely fine tuned that yet, that's something that Grant and I want to work on. But we recognize that we need to get, we have passed club champions that we're struggling to get in.
That's what, okay, so you're working on that.
Yes, we are working on that. We're going to make sure that, that there's some sort of seniority, but we're going to go back to the old some of the old policies and we're not going to take near as big of a waitlist.
Golfers don't tend to suffer in silence, so we, we hear.
They don't know.
True in town.
Yeah, I can't, I don't know, it differs between a bogey and a driver and I'm getting phone calls all summer long, so, good, all right, I'm glad you're working on it.
We have, Grant just reminded me, we also have added a couple of extra slots on Wednesdays too.
Cool, and also there were some concerns about, there was a little bit less outreach, you know, emails, hey, now's the time to start booking or, I don't know, yeah, so whatever.
Look for something real soon.
Yeah, well, not, I will get it.
And if we get a head nod from you all on this today, we're, our tea time should be live on Friday. For people to start booking for the summer, so.
Thanks for all the work on this, Kevin, Grant. I know it's a ton of work and it's great engaging Errol again with all of his historic knowledge, it's great.
Golf pro, is it, is that Grant?
We're close.
Okay, so you're not a golf pro, you're like a manager.
Correct.
Okay.
I was, I was on the maintenance side of things for twelve years, I was the assistant superintendent and then most recently superintendent, so.
Okay, I get you.
And Grant actually does some of the grooming, so.
Oh, yeah, I know that, yeah, that's why I.
Unfortunately, I'm going to probably be doing less of that now, but.
It was great, it was great this year, it really was, yeah.
Grant's what all our kids work for.
Yep.
During the summers.
Your son, for sure. Always welcome to send him back out of our way.
Good things, not bad things.
They were very good, yep.
Thanks for accommodating all the races. I know there's been kids out there and last weekend.
Guys great with the U's, I agree.
Yeah, just, just being very accommodating, so thank you guys very much. All right.
Thank you all.
Thanks for all the work. Okay. Onto food and beverage distribution. Who's doing this? Shannon? Yeah, have anything you want? No, you can, no.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tim and Town Council. We are here to discuss kind of where we're at with the food and beverage pilot program. And just, just to say a little of the background, we do have one oh six, the potential contractor in the audience today to certainly address any questions that if we get into some detail. I recognize that this program, and again, I just wanted to get into the bigger interest of the Blue River Pathways project. It was several months ago that the council really embarked on making improvements on the Blue River pathway. And as we staff started to evaluate some of the programming on the Blue River pathway. Food and beverage delivery was one component of that that was added to some of that congestion certainly. And similarly, about the same time, both staff and council had an opportunity to observe the program that's one oh six operates in Town of Vale for the food and beverage delivery. It was shortly after that that there is kind of direction provided by Town Council to to probe into the possibility here in the town for a similar program. At this point, staff has worked with, we've reached out to some of the stakeholders in the community and started to work through some of the challenges and some of the questions that have been raised about a potential program in Breckenridge. We've also, staff has had the opportunity to go to the Restaurant Association meeting on February seventh and and that was a opportunity to really meet with the greater group to go through some of those questions and I think we're here today to, to kind of carry this conversation. We, we have, just to say, we've, we've identified a few questions that we are looking for some feedback as we're approaching a decision point on moving this program in a pilot form forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shannon to kind of outline and walk us through some of those questions that are framed.
Thanks, James. I was just going to go in order of memo if that works for everybody.
A great place to start.
So from the public outreach, after meeting with Dave from NRO, it was identified that maybe we could look at doing some sort of reserved parking program there for NRO events or other big events. And I wanted to know if the council supported a concept like that that we could look into or if we don't want to do any changes to how we manage that parking lot currently.
So can you explain that a little bit? What is the loss in parking? What is the loss in parking? And what would the preferential parking look like?
Sure. The horseshoe has about thirty seven spots right now that are, that's identified for employee parking. And we're looking at offsetting those employee spots elsewhere. We've talked about F lot perhaps, opening that up. You know, we're looking at the South Gondola structure for additional employee parking. So that's the competing number. It's that thirty seven spots.
But those are for employees?
The horseshoe is employees.
Well, right, I'm just trying to understand how that affects.
Sure. So employees also park in the other sections of Tiger Dredge. So if there's employees scooching over further north, then that will im- possibly impact what the, um, and availability for the NRO.
See, uh, Tiger Dredge Employee Lot, is that general parking after six o'clock? Is it from eight to six? Isn't, is staff parking or is, uh, workforce parking? And then after six, it's opened up to the public?
Is Matt Housley behind me? I believe there is a time limit for that.
Okay.
As employee.
Did change that to later in the evening to help the NRO so that there weren't other cu- general customers coming in and parking in there earlier.
So there'll be more pressure on the parking lot as a whole. So that's, that's what we're looking at for the loss. We haven't really determined what we would do for preferential parking or a reservation system. Breck Park does operate for the ski area, reserved parking in the Vale owned lots. So they have background in how to do that. Like what I've seen, you know, up at Beaver Run, doing ski school drop off there, they rope off sections. People have made reservations. They come in, talk to the lot attendant and then get to go behind the rope. So we think that we could work with Breck Park to do something similar, maybe on that first row where we have ADA spots in the fifteen minute parking already. This sort of lends itself to a pretty discreet area where we could offer something like that to see if it works during the pilot. But it's at council's direction.
How many would, in a perfect world, how many reserve spots would, would NRO like?
We haven't gotten into that details. I think we would see what works geographically, maybe in that first spot. And then see how that's, um, you know, utilized by their guests. See if people are buying them and doing it. Cause there is some mobility considerations, you know, when we were working there, we had parking in the South Gondola lot and they had to run vans because a lot of the patrons, that's too far for them to walk. So it's really trying to get a support the patrons in that little bit of extra way.
I think, um, I had the opportunity to speak to Dave about, um, what this program would look like. And, um, the, the biggest concern was the mobility aspect and perhaps on uh, evenings of concerts of having additional, uh, ADA spots available could solve, solve it. Really looking from like, around six spots, just so that season pass holders that do have mobility challenges, uh, don't have to make it across. So I think the, the idea of preferential parking didn't sit well with Dave. And he didn't even like the, the, that term and more of going, hey, we have some season pass holders. They come to every show. How do we keep their travel distance, um, outside of the vehicle the same? And perhaps just, um, maybe turning a couple of the front row spots on those nights to ADA would, uh, accomplish that goal without having to go into Breck Park or try and make this or seem that there is a, uh, benefit to the NRO that other nonprofits don't, uh, get, get. But just understanding the, uh, the demographic.
It's a different animal. NRO compared to, you know, other nonprofits, you know, backstage theater, whatever. So I, yeah, I agree. I mean.
You just mentioned, would that be, could you see a way that that would be feasible to convert? Have three or so additional ADA spots on?
I don't think we could just flip a standard spot to an ADA spot easily. There's a lot of requirements for ADA spots with grading, aisles, ramping and that sort of thing. We could look at that, but that might be more difficult than going to a reserved spot from a legal standpoint.
Kind of ADA light?
Very cut and dry, those ADA requirements, yes.
Could we use the fifteen minute parking as flip parking spots during NRO concerts?
Just not called ADA.
Two fifteen minute spots and I'm sure they'd probably get parked. But, yeah.
Uh, they're sitting empty a lot when I go through there. I, for me, I think the priority is to get those employees parked. That's huge. And I'm all for F lot. I mean, that seems like the closest. That seems like the closest option. I know we lose revenue, we lose, you know, guest parking, but you know, that, those employee spots are high demand spots. And, um, and a lot of employees do park all the way through.
Absolutely.
That lot. So, um, so that's first priority to me is find a home for those employee spots. Um, which I, to me, um, sacrificing little F lot seems to be the most logical. Secondly, I, I understand that NRO's got some guests that, 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 um, South Gondola parking or structure is a little too far. But they also probably have seventy percent of their guests. The South Gondola parking structure is where they should be parking. And I think this is where with signage and, and, um, you know, and, and a lot of PR work where we really need to start pushing people into that structure. We invested so much into it. And I think we really need to be working a lot harder pushing people into it. Um, you know, I'm, they maybe get a golf cart and, uh, so volunteer that shuttles people back and forth like they do at sporting events or something. You know, um, but that, those are my thoughts.
Reservation for you?
I, you know, I, I'd love to work with those fifteen minute spots. Um, you know, if we, if we're talking six or eight and somewhat discreetly and we are, and we have found a home for those workers housing. I, you know, that, that's whatever. It's not a deal killer to me. I think the biggest piece is that we do a huge PR push towards South Gondola structure.
Errol?
Yeah, I agree with Dick. If it's not a huge lift, I'd like to pilot it for one year and see how this reserved parking works and, um, in the future, if we keep it, if we expand it to other Riverwalk events that we know have high attendance, but, um, I'm fine this year trying it with a few spots.
I would still love to just take a look to see if, I, I think it really does come down to the, uh, mobily impaired, I guess, and just see what that looks like and just take a time to, to be able to survey what we have and if it is an option, um, if the spaces are wide enough, if they're, uh, if the grade is less than two and a half percent or whatever it is.
Close two percent. In any direction.
So just kind of just take a look, um, otherwise, um, otherwise, I, I don't know if I, I want to set that precedent for preferential parking at this point of just, um, I, I just don't know what those asterities look like in the future and, um, yeah.
Thank you.
I, um, we're not talking people in wheelchairs. We're just talking people that are a little bit, uh, have difficulty maybe walking that distance, right?
Like your age.
Yeah, my age. I, I'd be, I'd, I'd be even more, I'd be more sympathetic. I, I think we could, I think we could kind of reserve some spots. I'd, I'd kind of err on the side of the people that have, you know, that have some mobility issues. The exact same people that year after year has been supporting that organization. And I think if we can acquiesce to a certain degree to make their experience a little bit easier. I think, you know, some of these people walking from the gondola, I mean, from their parking garage, you know, that could be a big ask. I mean, I mean, certainly not a problem with a rock concert, but for, you know, the Rock Mononoff, it might be a problem, you know, so. Yeah, I'd, 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 uh, I'd see what happens and, and try to, try to, uh.
Are you, are you in for like the six to eight range?
Six, eight, yeah, yeah. And also if you have something for former council people, that'd be good too.
A nice bicycle parking, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Um, I, I agree with, I thought Dick's, the way he put it was really good, that F lot for the workforce really market the South Gondola lot to the NRO folks. Um, hopefully some of them will redistribute there. And then I like the idea of really just turning the fifteen minute, um, ones into maybe reserved and, but I do think, I mean, I think Jay's point about looking if we can put a couple more ADA spots in there. If that's what the need is by our main user group that we want to support in this location right now. Um, it seems to make a lot of sense, so.
So you'd be okay with the fifteen minute spots being reservable? And then if we can accommodate more ADA spots, that would be the next step?
Yeah, not too many, cause that's twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to hit the right balance, but it might be a moving, it might be a pilot to something that we're.
We'll take a look at it. Thank you for that. Okay, now we jump into the scope of our F and B delivery and logistics pilot program. Um, we, we went out to RFP and we had one response from one oh six west, the operators in Vale. After working with them and cutting down the scope just a bit, we landed on a Monday through Friday pilot, um, three electric carts and a six bay cross dock in the horseshoe Tiger Dredge. I know we'll get some feedback on the Monday through Friday question as well, the number of carts. So, um, welcome to take all of those comments now to see if we're hitting where we think we want to be with the size of this pilot. Knowing adding anything is additional budget.
Why is Monday through Friday an issue? Cause this is not enough?
Yeah, because they have deliveries on Saturday.
Can we pull one of you up to the table? There's maybe some questions that are N B for everyone.
So these are the only guys that do it?
Jay, will you kick off this?
Sure. Uh, so I think in this question, there's two main, uh, parts. One, I think the easier one is the, the Monday through Friday. In, in town, we get deliveries six days a week, um, pretty much. It used to be only, you know, in March and July. And now it's, it's more times than not, or, you know, and, uh, Bob knows that I think Shamrock offers, uh, six day or Saturday deliveries pretty much year round now. And I think that that is, uh, the exact wrong time to, to do a budget cut and, uh, cut that sixth day. Um, because that's the time that we have the most traffic in town. We have the most people on the Riverwalk. And I think that it is, um, a time that we could have large drops for deliveries. So I think that for me, it is a non-starter to have a five day delivery window and that six days is an absolute must. Um, and I know that there is an expense to that, which, um, I guess we understand. But I think that it, it wouldn't be a appropriate way to evaluate a pilot program, uh, with a five day delivery schedule.
Yep. Yeah, we, we agree with that. We operate six and a half days basically in the Vale program. Um, so we operate Saturdays, uh, as well as some pickups on Sundays. There's no deliveries on Sundays. We do pickups on Sundays. Uh, we would like to roll that same thing here, uh, with Saturday delivery and Sunday pickups if possible.
So pickups being mostly.
Exactly. Is there any? We did start out five days a week in Vale for the pilot there. Um, but it kind of cut, it cut both ways because you would see more impact because on Monday through Friday. And you really noticed the trucks on Saturday. Um, so really drive an impact, but also you miss those deliveries on Saturdays. Um, from our team. So we're happy to start six days a week over here or six and a half.
I agree with the six or six and a half. Because I mean, safety and congestion is like that, they're the driving factors and Saturdays are worse. So it just, it does not make sense. Not to mention that it's hard enough for the delivery guys to figure out one program five days a week and a different program on the sixth day. That just seems crazy. Are you guys, even though it will be more expensive with the sixth day? Supportive of that?
For that, great.
What's the name of your company again? One oh?
One oh six west.
Go, you want to?
Sure.
Um, I think the other point on this, on the, the scope is the three electric carts and try and just to come up with an, an understanding of back of the napkin, uh, look, you know, I think that I had some questions on um, the capacity of three carts. And what, what is the average turn time for our town, um, for a trip from, uh, Tiger Dredge up to the Hearthstone and back while unloading a pallet? And, you know, and just looking at that, like, what, what is something, what does that turn time look like?
Let's say fifteen to twenty minutes, turn time with a full load.
And could I interject the question? Cause it's, it's rel- in relation to where you're going. How many broadline vendors do you hope to get for the pilot?
Broadline vendors.
Uh, Cisco, Shamrock.
Uh, really as many as we can. We've kind of been in discussion with James and Shannon about, um.
Three carts limit you, how many you can do?
Yes. It limits how many we can do with all trucks. We'd like to take as many as we can. We'd probably take one. Um, however, I think the impact might be better felt if we can take twenty other trucks and leave both broadline vendors on the street, if that makes sense.
Oh, I got you.
Got you. Go ahead.
That's, that's, and that's how we started in Vale. Uh, and that was part of the Monday through Friday system that we started with there. We were able to take, you know, twenty-four trucks off the street right away. And then we moved into Shamrock and Cisco when full implementation happened. Um, so you notice the impact a lot more. And it also freed up space when we take those other twenty trucks off. It frees up space for the broadline folks to, you know, move around a little quicker and easier as well. If that makes sense.
If they're here in town.
If they're here in town.
Um, and then how many restaurants are in the, uh, pilot program, uh, perimeter?
We counted somewhere in the realm of seventy.
And I think that's where I'm having trouble making the math work. Is that if our turn times per pallet is twenty or thirty minutes, depending on some shorter, if you're going to Blue Stag, which is a snowball throwaway or, you know, um, Micasa on one side or Blue River Beaster on the other, or whatever it is, might be a little bit longer. And we have a five hour window, let's say five AM to five, uh, till ten AM. And three buggies. I'm really not seeing how we have more than thirty to forty restaurant trips. Um, and that's of like out and backs with three buggies. So I guess this, me poking at some of the soft spots I see comes from this Restaurant Association we were in. Where I was talking to Kelly earlier of going, we're being, me and Dick are being held as the ones, you know, um, vi- um, buying for you guys. And all of a sudden, it's now it's on us. It's our reputation on the line of going, hey, all these naysayers are wrong. Trust us, we're, we're doing the right things. And if we're not able to execute correctly and we are not, and we're delivering at two, three o'clock in the afternoon because of, um, the number of restaurant trips, it's those naysayers are going to look like they had a, like to stand on. And so I would love to see how the schedule works that for every truck you're taking off, you have a restaurant trip. So for breakthrough beverage, you have a restaurant trips for each of those seventy restaurants. For Shamrock, that's a pallet to each of those seventy, most of those seventy restaurants. Like all of a sudden, we're looking, how many trips a day are we looking at? And how, I want to see how that's going to get accomplished with three, four, five, six buggies, whatever. Uh, that, that number equals. I want to know what the true operational cost would be. If, you know, I, I don't want after. I wanna know what the true operational cost would be. If, you know, I, I don't want after. You know, May, if you guys come back and go, hey, obviously three is not working. We need to bump up to six. And instead of an eight hundred thousand dollar recurring cost, it's gonna be one point six. Uh, or whatever it is. And I just, I, I wanna poke at some of the soft belly on this, not because I'm not in favor of it, but. Actually because I am in favor of it. And I wanna see it executed correctly. And I know that this is your world, but. I would like to see it in however you diagram it in Excel or however, whatever it works to see how that actually. Why my math is wrong.
I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and kinda um jump in here before Dave goes, but one of the, one of the, you know, challenges that. We've had internally with this pilot program is trying to look for the optimal size to do an effective pilot. And when we went out for the RFP on this, we, you know, the, as you now know, we received the one proposal. And the number was actually larger than what, than what's in this packet. And that was really, that number was really. Um, the scope of that and the, the math on that was for the whole town. And what we, what we did as staff and working with the town manager. Um, we were really, again, looking for kind of an entry point into this to, to demonstrate. That this program could be effective in this, in this community and this setting without. Trying to incorporate all the restaurants. And so initially, we were looking at just identifying. A, a smaller number than even this, in even the seventy, again, as a way to demonstrate the. Hopefully all the benefits of the program. I recognize that there's lots of questions to this and. And even as, as I'm listening to him now, you know, we're kind of changing, there's a little bit of scope creep in this of sorts of. Like if we add in more restaurants and certainly the three carts won't facilitate. You know, the program as well as the six carts that were in the original um proposal. So I think. That's some of the, some of the discussion here is if, if we are what we want to, what we would like to accomplish with this, you know, kind of this pilot. I think there's probably good um discussion around doing the full blown program as a pilot. Or if, if that were consolidated into and recognize that it, it's not gonna have the same. Reaches that hopefully we'll get to in year two potentially, you know, given the. You know, kind of the challenge that we identify and then are able to solve for. So I don't know, Dave, can you expand on that?
Yeah, and, and Jay, those are good points, you know, and I appreciate, you know, you kind of poking on those points. Um, and we're, we're hoping for success, obviously, and geared for success on all this stuff as well. Our number and our um challenge with working with James and Shannon was to get to a good balance of. How to effectively implement the program and prove the model as well as not. Overblow the budget, et cetera. So in talking to your point specifically about seventy locations, let's say. These carts, let's, uh, you know, there's different runs that you would take that you would have one. Uh, one stop on it, right? Um, and those are mostly in the core. From what I can tell, um, as far as volume is concerned, some stops you may not have all six days a week. Um, for certain vendors. And others, you can kind of co-mingle the stops within the carts. You're not taking a dolly load, you're taking a cart that can take twenty-five hundred pounds. So you can take multiple stops within that cart. And hit four or five stops on your run, and then hit four or five stops on your way back with linens, et cetera, back to the um unit. So there is some of those efficiencies that you're not necessarily realizing with all the vendors spread out all over the place in their trucks. And I can kind of work through that if you'd like me to and, you know, Excel spreadsheet it or, or what have you. And talk through that as well. But we do feel that we can make a substantial impact with three buggies. Um, and the bays of the docks that, that we proposed to um James and Shannon.
I think a couple of the thi- couple of things that we were hoping for is to, you know, there's gonna be a significant amount of infrastructure. To build if we decide to move forward with this permanent, say permanently. Um, and so what we wanted was a successful pilot to demonstrate that, that this is doable for us. Before we engage in that kind of expense. Um, the other thing is that we are hoping that this would be a good fit for some grant funding and having a pilot. To demonstrate that success makes us uh better, um, makes us look better in the future. For say a twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six build of that infrastructure to help fund this project. So. There were a couple of reasons why we were truly looking at that pilot type model versus. It's something that was expanded to um a bigger footprint of the town.
I think, uh, like, just from speaking with Jay, I think we're all supportive of the pilot model. I think the concern comes more at, if we're talking about seventy restaurants, are three um carts enough? And so I think, I mean, speaking from my own point of view. I think you guys should design a pilot that is going to be successful with three carts. And if that means you can only have thirty restaurants involved. Then that's the way you should do it. I think from seeing what happens in Vale, we're convinced. Of how great it is to get the trucks off of the streets. That's kind of less of this pilot for us. I think we all understand that not having the delivery trucks parking around town. I think what's more important about this pilot is that this works for the retail and restaurants in our community. And so I think that mostly we're just interested in the success of that relationship. Would you say that's?
Our, our Vale pilot, just so you're aware, our Vale pilot started with four workers and two carts.
How many restaurants?
And it's in about a square mile, mile and a half uh that we are operating. Um, and we touched and concerned every location. Um, it was madly efficient, um, hence the full program. Um, and it was smaller than this proposed pilot.
And it was your first time, right?
It was our first time. Yep.
So you're comfortable, you can facil- facilitate this with three and seventy?
The footprint for the pilot right now?
Yeah, that in the memo.
Yeah, we're looking at um French Street to the north, South Park to the south, excluding La Sima. And then Ridge Street to the east and like the river to the west.
So that's the whole core, more or less.
Station, not really ever considering um. City market or like the base of the mountain, not considering peak nine, peak eight. Be transparent, one oh six had four carts in their original proposal. We trimmed it back to three when we took out La Sima. We had La Sima in the original and they wanted four carts.
What's that dollar saving, Shannon?
It's a thousand dollars a month per cart.
And then we had additional.
Twelve thousand a year?
We had additional staff as well. Yeah.
Down twenty-three percent. We went from like two point two to one point seven. They took off some of their fees. We trimmed back a little bit on staff. We trimmed back a little bit on the area.
I, for me, I think Jay's point is a really good one. I think we do need Saturdays because it is a big day of deliveries around here. Um, which may have changed since you did the pilot in Vale, actually. It's, it's really grown a lot of late. Um, I, I, my inclination is you guys are the experts. You're doing a great job over there. And I, I'm willing to leave it to you guys. But if you guys tell us we need four, I'm willing to fund four. I appreciate staff working on it. I just wanna see it successful to Jay's point, I really do. I. You know, wearing my Tattletatting hat, I'm really excited to get these trucks off the road. Wearing my forty-plus year restaurateur hat in Breckenridge, I can't wait. Thing with Shamrock showing up at four o'clock on, no offense, Bob, it's not your fault. But showing up at four o'clock on Saturday afternoon, you know, it's. It, this is a win-win in many ways.
And I really appreciate that in the flexibility and the support from council to fund this where we need to. I think what's great about the pilot is we can launch this, we can do all that capital investment because a lot of this cost is the initial capital investment. We can run for a few months this summer and see how it feels. And then if we need to scale up or down, adjust boundaries. Take off some problem vendors, who knows, we can adjust it for winter.
Yeah.
We can get going. I, I think summer's a great time for one oh six west to get a feel and start building those relationships before. And I know summer is just as busy as winter, but winter comes with other challenges and we can really. Get some experience under our belts here in town.
Have you gotten case counts? Like, have you, have you dove in with a Shamrock or a breakthrough beverage to look at case counts? For the seventy versus what you do?
Some are a little bit higher than Vale, some are on par with Vale. Um, as far as case counts, but overall about a third more uh from what we can tell.
So you've done.
On this data that, from the data that's been provided to us. Right. We've asked several vendors and they have not given us data.
So just throwing out an idea of, um, is there a way to sort of roll out the pilot? By the three, thinking that you can serve as fif- seventy restaurants, but really only enroll fifty. And then we already have the cart and we already have the staff that we could staff up the next day. I think. The real, there's just such a high level of risk here for not being able to perform. And so I think we would rather just have it a little bit overstaffed and a little bit over, you know, trucked. And then be able to.
Scale up.
Scale up.
Yep.
Would you be okay if I could phrase that a little differently and say. We want success and what Kelly just described is a conservative approach and, and we're gonna support that. If you guys, as the experts, determine that's what we need and, and our staff who we've worked with. And we totally trust for so long, after you guys hash it out. Um, I think you hear our concerns up here. And I, my inclination is to leave it. To the three of you guys or whoever else one oh six wants to involve. I totally trust James and Shannon and. Seeing what you guys can do. I, I, my inclination is to leave it to the experts. To, to, after we've expressed our concerns, um, to let you guys figure it out. And if it's a fluid pilot over the course of the summer, I think it's what Shannon was describing. I'm personally okay with that. I think that's how you find your capacities and what you need to do, but that, those are my thoughts.
I think that's fine. And I, I think you guys have heard that the priority is just being successful for the business owners and. Um, as long as you guys do that, then however you do it is your business.
Well, like, again, to echo what Shannon said, we appreciate the support on, on this. And I, I think. The full, being fully transparent as, as, as we are in this, we also wanna involve the restaurateurs and, and. Make sure that we are getting that feedback in real time so we can address and be fluid with this program. And I know it's. All of our, um, you know, beliefs and goals to be successful in this, so I think.
I'd like to engage a couple of restaurateurs out of Vale as well. Let's learn, let's let them learn their mistakes and we'll benefit from them, I mean.
I, I think that's an excellent idea.
And myself and Matt Valder, we know people over there that, that we can pick and then. You're not accused of going, oh, you picture the ones that love you, you know? So let the restaurateurs here reach out to restaurateurs there and get some input from them and uh. You know, maybe put them in touch with staff.
Excellent.
Some of the Vale restaurateurs.
Thank you.
Confident with that group over there.
Carol, do you have anything on this question of?
No, I agree with, I mean, the scope, it'd be great to see what this pilot looked like during Saturdays, just to mimic our busiest times. Make sure that it works under, um, what town is like a lot of times, that busy. Um, and from the logistics, I. Leave it up to you. I leave it up to James and Shannon to work with what makes sense logistically for you all. Perfect, thank you. Um, final question, docking fees. I think I was more worried about budget than you all, so thank you for that. Um. You've driven that.
Bit shocking when we opened.
So the question is whether we should assess docking fees to the vendors during the pilot. Our honest recommendation from one oh six west and staff is to not do docking fees initially. We want it, this to be a collaborative, friendly pilot where vendors are opting in, they're working with us. Letting us get over our hurdles and speed bumps here in Breckenridge. And then there's also, you know. The relationship will build with the restaurants. So we can go, and I believe this might be how Vale did it, with no docking fees. For the pilot initially.
That's what Vale did, you said?
No docking fees. And then as we get this stood up, we could implement a docking fee. The average cost from what I can tell from the Vale up um permit, they have online is around fifteen hundred, two thousand per month. For the largest vendors. So that was actually lower than I thought. So that would be a way we can recoup revenue in the future. Or we're happy to implement it now. We could come back with some information. Um, Vale does a tiered structure, smaller trucks that don't come frequently, don't pay as much. The large eighteen wheelers who are there every day pay more. Um, so we wanted to get some feedback from council. If you want us to look into a dock fee in this first year or to wait until we can. Assess the program um and see how it's working and build those relationships first.
Jay, you wanna start off?
I'm just curious, do we have the number of suppliers that we're hoping to capture this pilot year?
For the pilot?
Yeah.
It's, it's fairly fluid right now. Um, we'd like to start with, you know. Eight vendors or so and kind of move up from there. And we can scale fairly quickly if we reach the efficiencies that we know we can get to. Um, that said, the data collection during the pilot in Vale was really. Um, important for us to be able to help the town of Vale build a tier structure. Um, we don't know exactly when, what trucks deliver, how, how, what their volumes are, their sizing, et cetera, et cetera. So for the pilot, we're able to collect that data and then provide feedback to staff to um build those tiers. Or any kind of implementation of a fee.
Because we understand it, this will actually improve efficiency and save the vendors money. Their delivery drivers spend a lot of time in town driving around. So making one stop for those vendors will save them money.
Yeah, I think it makes sense not to have the fee this pilot year, especially since it's a voluntary often.
I, I agree with you in, in concept that, that makes sense. I think there's a couple of things that are different. Is that this isn't the first time that these distributors are doing it like Vale. They have, they understand the savings and labor, truck wear and tear, overnight stays for the drivers. All these different concepts that maybe weren't realized, maybe were thought conceptually would be a good idea or would happen. It has happened in, in, in a market like this is a proven concept that they're gonna be able to shave X percent off of these routes. And take these routes from being the most dreaded to the most coveted. And that is, that is real, like they, the driver turnover that happens for these routes is so great. Versus the Vale route where people are lining up to take that. Um, so that, that was one point. The second point is. That I would love as a pilot program that we have systems in place to charge. Uh, the, the, the vendors, the trucks, the, the companies, even if it's a nominal rate. So if we're thinking that. It's gonna be fifteen grand a year when we're established, we can do a fraction of that, like of. Two grand a year, whatever it is, just so that the system of understanding that there's a billion places, a contact, there's a. There's a precedent set I thought was um, was pretty important. I guess I just combined two and three, but. Of having, you know, the fact that the distributors know that there's a savings and that they're, that's why they're lining up and raising their hand going, yes. Please pick me, um, to have a precedent set that there will be a charge and that there's an understanding. And then having a process for having that charge of thinking out, you know, what this is gonna look like. Uh, even if it's a nominal rate or a, a fraction of what we normally would.
I you know, I'll benefit from this. So I struggle some. You know, it'll help us a lot. So I kind of feel like I semi want to recuse myself, but I agree with Jay.
I do too. So that vote carries whether you voted or not.
I mean, this is tough for us because it's something that, that I believe in wearing both hats.
So, so charge some amount.
Some amount. Do you want us to implement it right away or can we implement it for winter after we have data? Cause we would like to base it on something.
Oh.
Yeah. We have Vale.
Well, you're saving this many hours. We know you've decreased this many stops. Therefore our rate is X.
These guys have the data on Vale. Yeah.
And they know, yeah. And they know how many deliveries.
Away, but we'll bring it back to you for a blessing.
Yeah.
I just think there's more commitment when people have scared in the game too.
It's good to have their like, you know, billing process in, in, in line. Kind of like, you know, giving Amazon a credit card makes it uh, easier to order.
The one thing I want to add to this too is in that we just haven't mentioned, but you know, in the, in the spirit of, of partnership, we also will be involving the, the vendors themselves in this. So um, you know, kind of based on what I'm hearing right here, there might be an opportunity to work with some of those vendors to, to kind of initially ask them what that threshold of participation could look like initially. So I think there is some, some, some space there that we can, you know, recover some, some of this initial um, fee as part of this. And the final thing I would say about this program too is, is I know there's um, great interest in having as part of this program also leading into trash recycling, compost and some of those other materials that are generated in our, in this, in this commercial core. So we have been having numerous internal discussions about kind of what that next step of this program is going to look like and kind of in year two. So our goal right now is, is I haven't had a chance to chat with Shannon about this yet, but we would like to get this off and rolling, start to some of that data collection and come back somewhere out in front of the some, some pencil numbers for discussion of what that trash recycling compost program could look like. And, and there'll be a fee component to that as well. That will be.
Yeah, um, in your, in your eventual proposal and budget, will that take into, into consideration? The charging fees, what we're going to cost for charging these vehicles? I don't even know what that, how expensive that is.
We have utilities in the budget.
Yeah. Okay. I just didn't want it to be a surprise.
So we approve to move forward with the contract because we need to order parts like tomorrow.
I think there's two other, two other points that I think, or two and a half more that I'd just like to bring up is what, off of what James said, I think it is very important to all of us up here to, I don't think we would be moving forward with this if there wasn't a trash recycling glass compost component to it. And knowing that you can only bite off as, you know, you can only eat an elephant one bite at a time, right? But just to know that there, there's more than just talks, that there's an idea of what steps need to happen in order to implement that, that portion. What does it look like? How does that change everything else we're doing on the Blue River as far as how big do these trash enclosures need to be? Where do they need to be? Do we need to go to a singer hall or what, what is all those obstacles that are in between where we are today? To where we want to be a year from now. And just to have uh, some sort of a document, maybe it's just internal, but that shows that, that thought process. And then um, the, the Park Avenue. I think um, the, the way that our semis are going to be coming into Tiger Dredge. I know what you said that it is impossible currently to bring those semis into Tiger Dredge through Park Avenue, through that roundabout. If there's anything we can do, I think this was something that kind of put egg on our face at the Restaurant Association meeting going, oh, you want to get the trucks off of Main Street, but you're bringing them all in Main Street? If there is, I know that there's a plan for the permanent program. There is anything that we can do, uh, you know, that's within reason to allow those semis to come in to Tiger Dredge during the pilot program off of Park Avenue and exit off Park, uh, Park Avenue. I think that's really, really important. And I would just want to prioritize that of not just going, yeah, you know?
But we'll try, I'll, I'll get some help from the actual truck drivers to vet it for us. Cause sometimes what it looks like on paper and what they could actually pull off could be two different things. But I one hundred percent agree with you on that. Well, on both of them, but on the trucks especially.
Okay, so everybody said what they need to say and we can support this. They can order parts tomorrow.
Kelly.
Thank you guys for all your work on this. Thanks 106 West for coming. Appreciate you coming over. Hope safe travels back over to Vale. Hope the pass is open. We're going to have a five minute break and then we're going to go into Entrada.
Tim and Peter, I said, how you doing?
Great.
Okay, I think we'll start back up with Mark Truckee and Entrada Development.
Thanks Mayor Owens, Mayor Tim. Good afternoon. Um, yeah, so the Entrada development, uh, the annexation proposal was actually in front of the council numerous times back in twenty twenty-two. And then um, basically a little hiatus, if you will, was put on hold when um, BGV, um, Mike's company um, shifted gears to focus on focusing on here the last eight months. And that's a, a new development agreement for the Gondola lots. And Peak seven and eight area as well is involved with that. Kirsten just wanted to make you aware of some of the steps. W- w- we don't necessarily need to start everything over again. We just kind of halted where we were going and now we're kind of rebooting that. But I'll, I'll have her mention what we have to do.
Right. So um, you, you may recall as you were all on council at the time that um, we received the petition in August twenty twenty-two for the same piece of property that is now at um, discussion here as uh, potentially being part of the development and um, the property will be uh, potentially used for workforce housing. That uh, petition, once it was filed, was set for um, you all to approve a resolution. Um, you have to re- review the petition and there's statutory requirements. Um, and it's called a substantial compliance determination, which was made in September of two thousand and two. And there are a number of procedural um, prerequisites to annexation. It is um, critical that notice is sent out to the community, which was done four different occasions through um, publication. And those notices put the community on um, uh, in advance of the potential hearing on eligibility. So then council on, on November eighth, two thousand and two held that eligibility hearing. And determined that the um, the real property at issue in the petition was eligible for annexation. So now um, we have been working jointly with the um, legal team for BGV and um, agree that the next step for council in this process is to set this um, for a potential annexation, which is a legislative action and it'll be um, brought through an ordinance and two readings. Um, and I know Mark has all those dates, but we thought it was important to kind of remind council where you've been. And that um, when the idea was proposed to change uh, the scope of the potential development, that's when we paused things. But we're going to pick it back up since it's the same process, uh, same property and same like description.
Thanks Kirsten. Um, and as you know, Entrada is tied in with um, the BGV uh, development agreement to a certain extent and that the council has agreed that um, that it would be an appropriate location to do the housing mitigation for parcel four, the admin site. And that the council has also agreed to at least tentatively um, that Mike could transfer up to fifteen TDRs to Entrada to get to the levels of density he needs there. The existing density there is not enough to accommodate all of his employee mitigation that he needed to do for parcel four. So um, I did just a couple of other things that I wanted to note um, briefly is that uh, there's a, and, and I did send out a table, a, a two-page deal point thing to you, I think yesterday, or Shannon had that forwarded. And it showed the old deal points that had been agreed to at the previous meetings. Um, back in uh, three different work sessions in twenty twenty-two. Those um, those have now been, I've gone in and overstruck some of those and deleted where they're no, they no longer apply and the ones that still do. Um, but uh, my memo is structured so that it, it kind of looks at that too in terms of what was agreed to before and then what are things that are now kind of like new ask or revisions to ask. There's also a number of things that Mike's no longer asking for as part of this and we'll go over that in a little more detail as well. So um, the one other thing is that there's um, not finalized plans at this point in time. So we don't know the exact square footages we're looking at. I know Mike's team, Bill Campy, they're working on that um, as we're speaking. So we're um, the hope is to um, get as much feedback as we can from you today and be coming back for a first reading. The second meeting in March. I'm gonna leave it open at this point. Um, if we need to continue the work session or have another work session in early March, we could probably fit in a little time for that too, but that depends on the agenda on March twelfth. Um, so uh, I've, I've got a number of questions here related to different topics. And so um, if it's okay, Kelly, I'll take us through the first one and then you, you guys can answer, ask any questions you have about it. If it makes sense, we can go that route. Rather than me presenting the whole thing.
That sounds great.
Focusing on, so we'll start out with.
That's one question before that made that framework a little bit. Do we know what percentage of Entrada will be to mitigate twenty-four A? Or the employee mitigation and what, what percentage will be? I know you said that some of the design's still up in the air, but basically are you, does BGV need the entire property to satisfy the employee mitigation or will it be half or ten percent like?
What I, what I've heard from my, my people is that in a, in a ninety percent range. I, I don't know if Mark agrees with that, but that's a different discussion, a different time.
I think that gives us a better, good idea of what we're looking. So, thank you.
And then that sounds consistent with um, I've been looking at too. So maybe a little bit. Okay. So uh, we talked about rental restrictions. Um, and the previous prod, uh, the previous project proposal was more for studio types projects. So um, there was lower AMIs associated with that. Um, there was also some deal points where the town was providing density. Um, the town was providing water piffs up front. Mike was going to pay for them down the road as he started to use them. So those don't come into play right now. Um, in meeting with Lori Best, uh, we had a meeting last week. Um, Lori actually prefers to see one bedrooms here. That that is um, one of the targets we'd like to shoot for. And she's willing to, if we do that, go to a hundred percent AMIs. And in terms of the average uh, rental rate on those. So um, that is the proposal. Um, I don't know the exact number, but we may see up like forty, forty give or take one bedroom units there. There's also the clauses that were agreed to previously, which you guys still need to weigh in on. And that's that between the time of this approval and the time that the project's completed, there'd be a two percent escalator on those costs. And then after, once it's CO'd and occupied, then a three percent annual escalator would be associated with it. So um, that's pretty much it. Don't know if Lori's probably not here right now. We have any, but um, I'll take any questions you guys have on that and, or your comments. Cause I'm looking, looking for your comments and if you're comfortable with that approach.
Okay. So rental restrictions and the things that we need to um, chime in on is if we're good with the one bedroom unit type. If we're okay with the hundred percent AMI, the two percent annual escalator until three percent when they're developed. Those are the four things that. Okay. Does anyone want to kick us off?
Looks like it's me. Um, it's good to know, great question, Jay. Um, it's good to know kind of we're talking most of this project or if not all is going to go to mitigate twenty-four. Um, Mike, approximately what's, how many square feet do you, I'm just trying to think how many employees per unit count?
Yeah, we think that, well, so how many square feet? I think around a residential around twenty-four thousand ish. Um, gross building size, I think in the low thirties. Um, storage corridors, you know, manager unit, things like that. Um, and um.
How did that compare to the last building?
There were sixty-six studios in it. So the building was like about the same size, but it was sixty-six four hundred square foot units as opposed to forty, what, you know, like Mark said, Lori wanted one bedrooms. And so but the AMI at one hundred percent wants to fluctuate up and down to have space at eighty percent and accommodate, you know, make that, that average out at a hundred and twenty. And so we're still working through the how to determine what's eighty versus one twenty. And that may, that may end up being, I'm, this is hypothetical, okay? But you know, cause this is, we're in a very beginning uh, of, of a new unit configuration side of this building, but we may end up in a, say by way of example, a five hundred square foot one bedroom has the lower AMI rent versus the, versus one that's a little bit larger has a higher rent. I, I don't know that the location on first or second floor or east or west side of the building really should be determinative of how much extra rent someone pays or doesn't pay.
How many employees are you calculating?
Well, what we've heard and, and from our experience, we think that most of these will be two people per unit, which is why we're comfortable thinking we'll accommodate the same number of people that were in there before with sixty-six studios, maybe, you know, that will in that range. I don't, I, I'm not going to put all BGV employees in there.
But if we just do math in twenty-four A.
There are forty, if there were, we have to provide square footage, not.
Right. That's what I'm, that's why I started asking.
So our math would say at forty units, there could be eighty people in there, forty employees. And then there, you know, there are significant others.
And you'll provide the square footage to make that work based on the formula in twenty-four A?
Well, that's the, that's the twenty-two thousand or whatever that we end up having to be required to provide.
Gotcha.
Um, then we would provide that. And then there would be some excess which, which will not be bankable towards anything else we do in the future. This is a, whatever is extra is extra. There's no bonus points for that.
Um, so to answer the questions, I'm, I'm okay with the one bedrooms. Um, I, you know, I look forward to seeing the numbers when they all come out. Um, I get it that you don't have them yet. It's a pre- pretty preliminary. Um, the, you know, I've never been a fan of the three percent when it comes to workforce housing. I prefer to see that two percent. Increase or AMI like everybody else. Yeah. What else you asking? That's it, right?
So you're okay with a hundred percent rents?
Yeah, average a hundred percent. Um, yeah, I prefer to see it eighty. You know, if we were giving density, I would insist on eighty. You know, when we get to some of the fees, they want waived, that'll come up. But at this point of discussion. But at this point of discussion, I'm okay at a hundred is the average. But it compels me more to push for the two percent escalator and not three.
All right, Jeffrey?
I'm okay with this as written. I'm not going to cripple over a one percent, and I think we'll have time to look at it down the road.
Okay, Jay?
I am, I'm great with everything that's in there. I, the only thing that I'm, I guess explanation from Mark is that. If, if a one-bedroom, the M, a hundred percent AMI today for a one-bedroom is a thousand bucks. It, let's just say it is. Yeah, I'm just trying to do math, which even is.
Jay needs to have round.
Right around two thousand.
So if, all right, so it's two thousand dollars for one bedroom today. Why are we doing a rental escalator off of that versus just using what the AMI number is upon completion?
Well, we had that discussion previously, and I know Mike preferred not to do that.
Okay.
And Lori's actually okay with that too, in terms of, you know, AMI is not always the perfect indicator, right?
But we're using it anyway. Either way, we're using it, it's just this way is a known entity of exactly.
That's right, because AMI went down post-COVID. I mean, it went down, and so the idea that it got. You know, that the area median income decreased is not true, that didn't happen, but the way they calculate it, it does. And so when you, if you use AMI to drive the rents, you're subject to the volatility of the AMI. And that's, that's a hedge, that's a hedge that works, that cuts both ways for the town and for us to say we want to stabilize it. Respect what you're saying about the AMI, but that's what I'm trying to guard against. I mean, if we wanted to do AMI and say that it baselines and it can't go below and the increase is only limited to how much AMI increases, then let's have that discussion. But the idea that we sign up for AMI and it drops thirty percent one year because of some weird event or the way, you know, someone in Washington or, or Denver calks it. That, that's where I get really nervous about the reliability of that number.
Absolutely, thanks.
Um, one question, the rents, that includes, I mean, I'm assuming similar to the Gold Rush lot, utilities, all fees, everything?
We have it all in, we have, I want to have, I sent some emails to these guys, I want to have a little more discussion about some, very concerned about fire insurance. And I think those of you that own buildings have seen some dramatic increases in your property insurance. And so committed to the generally known controllable increases to be committed to that. I just, I want to talk with Lori and get her ideas of what's happening with, within the town and what happens with how you intend to address. Some of these increases in costs that are uncontrollable to the owner of the building and how that impacts the rents. And so I want to, and as part of the discussion on the eighty percent units, the hundred percent units, the one-twenty's to figure out collaboratively with the town, how we address that. And so we need to, we owe Lori some building design and then a further discussion, I think, we'll have. Cause that's the way I see this going, so I just have some, just nervous about that, because I'm seeing. You, you got, well, I don't know if you own your building, but crazy.
Can some of that be mitigated by just a good design? I mean, you know, we hear the horror stories of like the gold camps, you know, the old buildings that it's just going crazy.
I mean, you can get, you can get diminishment of your premiums by having, you know, robust sprinkling systems. And, you know, more fire retardant elements on your building top and sides and things like that. But that's, yeah, that's spitting in the wind with the, with the forest fire dangers.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm also fine with as written, so on to fees now.
Yeah, so free, for fees. Essentially. BGV parent, I guess they've already paid, I haven't double confirmed this, but I'm pretty unsure. They've already paid their annexation and development agreement fees, which are, you know, considerable. And what, what they propose is to waive the planning and building fees. So that's what we're looking at. Because we don't have a designed building, you know, it's hard to. I, I can only give you ballparks, but the planning fees are probably gonna, would probably coming in around ten grand for this. And that's pretty solid. The building fees, we ran some really rough calcs on some numbers this morning and. You know, they're probably going to be in the range of sixty-five thousand, give or take ten or twenty. So that's what we're looking at in terms of fee waivers.
Yes, sir, with fees, Jay?
Sure. Uh, Mark, typically on, as we spoke about earlier, on workforce housing, these planning and building fees are waived.
That's correct.
As customary.
Done that, like, for example, Tom Begley's project out there, Highlands Riverfront, the Stan Miller property. He's paying for his market units, all his fees. We're waiving the building and the planning fees. It's just one of the incentives we have provided for workforce housing in the past.
Mark, was twenty-four A in place when that was agreed to?
No, it wasn't.
See, I think that changed everything.
Yeah.
I think twenty-four A changed that. I don't think that's a legitimate precedent anymore.
Do the top fees still, are they still being assessed?
Yes.
Um, and then for, we were talking about water earlier. Is the water charges, they be assessed as an in-town or out-of-town water, water fee when it comes to the commercial?
It'll be in-town, because it'll be annexed, yep.
I am. I'm well aware that this decision will be precedent-setting for new construction. Of workforce housing that is used to mitigate employee, workforce, employee mitigation twenty-four A. And, you know, in talking with Mark and planning. I, I'm okay with that precedent that we're going to waive building and planning fees. For workforce housing, for deed restricted housing, even if it is for the mitigation. I think that this is, uh, twenty-four A is a burden on, on new construction, on developers, on business owners. And in, in a good way, though, it's, it's a burden that we willingly put up there. But I think it almost is double dipping the other way by us taking the fees from, uh, on, on that workforce housing. And so I am supportive of waiving those.
Yeah, I agree, this is workforce housing and if this extra less burden will incentivize new construction or make it that much easier. I'm fine waiving the fees, I appreciate the fact that we'll have our pips to keep the waterfront full.
Yeah, I, I'll be the, the lone naysayer. The staff has a lot of hours into this, a lot of expense to the talent into this. When you look at twenty-four A, I was on the housing committee when that was written. We are very middle of the road, if not low middle of the road for other resort communities in mitigating employees. I think it's very fair and I think developers should pay their way. So I'm a no.
And I'm with Dick, same reasons, it's only thirty percent of the workforce that we're offered, that we are offsetting or he's offsetting. So. But it doesn't matter. So I'm also a no, but we're still waiving them because.
Jost at that windmill.
Uh, vesting, uh, so they're requesting to. Basically coincide the vesting to seven years, which is the same as parcel four in the development agreement. It's obviously because the two are tied together. So at any rate, that's the request and wanted to see council's comfort level with that.
Who wants to start us off? Dick?
I'm good with that, is provided we're not given any assurances. I mean, as long as he's following code with, I mean, he can't CO building four until he COs the employment, so we're covered. I'm, I'm good with that. That's reasonable.
Yeah?
Dick's good with it, I'm good with it.
Yeah, five.
Okay, all right, and then I'll start taking us through these. You may have some questions as we go, because the, the question is at the end, and these are all. You know, bringing you guys back up to speed, I know you remember a lot of this, but there may be some of the details that. I had to look back at to make sure I, I remember correctly. So, uh, so these are all waivers that were previously agreed to, first one being policy three density. And it was going to accrue a number of negative points because the existing density on the site would only allow about. Seventeen to maybe nineteen thousand square feet in that ball range, a ballpark. And that's not enough to accommodate the, um, even getting a twenty-four A. So, um, you, you know, obviously you've separately said, yeah, we're okay with Mike transferring some density here. So. But when you, when you do that, you're still subject to the negative points, because you're going over what the density is recommended for the, for that property. So, um, anyway, previously the council was supportive of that. They realized, council, I think frankly, was pushing. To get a fair amount of density on the site. And so they're willing to waive the negative points associated with it. And the way the negative points work is they just ratchet up, um, the more you go over and it's the percentage you go over. You can get up to like a hundred negative points, um, if you go far enough, um, which obviously that'd be pretty impossible to overcome. As is the previous, we were at around thirty to thirty-five negative points for the last proposal. This one may come in a little different, but probably not significantly different than that. So the request is a waiver from those points.
Okay, how do people feel?
Didn't we already kind of do this?
Yeah, but it's, I mean, this is a new agreement, so we really, and the proposal has.
Previous building.
The proposal has changed.
It was going on to the site.
Oh, no.
In addition to what is already there, and now it's our density going on to the site.
Okay.
So it's subtly different.
Dick?
You know, and Mike, I. I'm inclined to be extremely reasonable on this. I was pushing you to move this over to Entrada, I think I was the loudest voice, I think we all agreed it was better. Appreciate you being willing to do it. However, I can't do it now, because I have nothing to look at. You know, we, we need to have a design before we can waive negative points on the design. So I think it would be irresponsible for us to waive all of these codes without even knowing what we're waiving them for. So I, I, I'm inclined to be extremely reasonable on these, you know, we're pushing for the density to be here. Which really affects all of these, but I, I, I can't say yes without having something to look at.
Carol? You, I guess I'm wondering now with all of these, if we're gonna. If there's a way to discuss these without having the specifics, I mean.
I guess, Mark, do you think there are a few of them? May, and maybe the density, I understand like the height in that, you really need to see.
Yeah, but density, I'm probably, conceptually, I'm okay with, you know, if it creates this horrendous building, then I think not. But probably the other pieces will be able to judge the building on its merits. And I'm teasing when I say horrendous building, but, um. Yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with the density, but what it creates, I need to see before I can waive all these.
All right, well, let's go ahead and put our two cents in on density then.
I think Dick brought up a good point on density. I do have less concern because we know about the square footage on, so the negative points there, I'm very open to waiving. Some of the others, I think, are dependent on sites with the designs.
Okay, Jay?
Um, are we?
Just the density for snow and then we'll, yeah, maybe we'll group a few of the other ones after this.
Yeah, I'm inclined that, that's, you know, that we're, we're in the right place with that and that's acceptable way, but.
Jeffrey? Yeah, I pushed for more units over here, so I'm definitely okay with that. Mark, do you want to do them one at a time for the rest, or why don't you just go?
Go through them quick, you have any questions in it, yeah, yeah. So on building height, they're talking about. Trying to do modular here, and I like the justice center that we just went through. And so they think building height may be a little more than it was before. So right now, uh, it's recommended for that land use district twenty-six feet. They may go up to one and a half stories taller than that. Which would probably accrue minus fifteen points, so they're.
Was it half a story tall?
Yeah, the last, last one was less, it was a half a story, that's correct, Dick.
So what is it, a three-story building?
Yeah, it's over three stories. And I, that's the last we heard, I know they're still refining this, so, yeah. So anyway, that's, that's the last I heard from them, is it, that's, it's going to be taller, so we can bring more specifics on that. Parking, there was. Basically just a small request, I think overall in the big scheme of things, but they're going to have a manager's office here. And that they requested to reduce one of the spaces, there's two spaces required for it. And council previously said, yeah, we're fine with that. Engineering code waivers, there's a number of those that we can get into more detail here down the road. And Shannon's available to, probably at a later date's the time to like get into more details on this, but. You typically don't have two access to, accesses to one site. Now, the sec, the access off County Road four fifty here on road there is only going to be for emergency access. And it accesses Marty Getz's mini storage next to it. So the, the access for the residents is all going to be off Highway nine. But anyway, there needs to be a waiver from the code for that as well as the width. It's already been constructed off Highway nine, it exceeds the width. There's also detention and subsurface infiltration, basically ground, uh, vaults, underground vaults to handle the detention. For the drainage coming off of the site. And there needs to be some waivers associated with that as well. Open space. The previous proposal asked for a waiver from that, this one does as well. We typically have thirty percent is what we require of the site to be open space, where it's not hardscape, impervious parking or building. And currently, the last I heard, they were in the twenty percent range and they're going to try to get closer to thirty, but they don't know if they can do it.
We would tighten that up and give you a specific number, right? So the variance would say no less than twenty percent kind of thing, Campy's telling me we're at twenty percent, a little bit above that right now, but we would be. It wouldn't be a open-ended, like all the way down to zero kind of thing, it would say.
And then the last one that was agreed to previously, the twenty-four A. So interestingly enough, even though it's all employee housing, it's still. Requires that you offset for that and you provide housing, because I, it does create, uh, you know. More demand, you got to run a building, right, and all that. And so last time, based on the size of the building, um, it was about twenty-six hundred square feet of space. It would have to been provided to meet twenty-four A. What council agreed to is go with five hundred square feet and call it good. And it was essentially.
You have to provide employee housing, a building with employee housing?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's the way our code reads.
That's good government right there.
Is that one that council would like to weigh in on now?
Well, so how do people feel about the last, you know, several, five or so? There's the building height and parking requirements and engineering and development code waivers, open space. Do you guys all just want to chime in on that later when we have more details on the, on the actual?
Might be helpful for Mike for us to chime in on them now.
Well, I mean, I, I'm sure there are at least some conversations on building height. So can we just keep it short, keep your comments brief and like just put them all together into, for these? And then also please do the employee housing. And then also please um do the employee housing one as well. You wanna start?
Sure, um the employee housing one, five hundred feet, I'm fine. The height, I want to see the building, architectural compatibility, I want to see the building. The um engineering designs, I want to consult with our engineer. That all of them?
Open space, open space.
Oh, open space. I'm okay with no less than twenty percent. Hopefully it'll be more.
And the parking?
The one.
With incentives, you can go less.
Carol, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, the building height, I'd like to see more towards the end of that paragraph and maybe we'll talk about it in additional requests. We talk about waiving some design standards because of the modular construction. So that's something I'm really interested in, talking a little bit more there and making sure we have some parameters on our design standards. Um parking, yes, I have no problem with reducing the spaces for the management office. Engineering, to chat with staff, open space, I'm fine with, I think I'd like to see more details. And then twenty-four A, I'm fine with what was written.
Uh thank you. Um building height, I am, I guess I have a visceral reaction to the one and a half stories over uh the code. And so just obviously, I think we'll have to see the building, but just for guidance, I I don't, I don't see that going well. Um and so just to provide that guidance of um, yeah, I think that'd be difficult. Parking for the uh is is fine. The code, the engineering and development code waivers for access and detention. The only thing that I'm curious about with the design is seeing that access the um the entrance and exit off of Highway nine. I know we've discussed that a lot, that those curb cuts and the um disruption to the highway and what C dot says, and I'd like to see how that actually lays out on a plan and how that circulation um functions. Uh open space, uh not less than twenty percent is fine. Uh social community, how uh twenty-four A. If, is this something, Mark, that we're interested in changing? How this operates for future, like can we use this so that BG, the the applicant's not an exception, but we somehow tweak this um so that in the future we don't have? Does that make sense? Or is that?
We would still need to do a code amendment, but if you if you guys decided and gave us direction, we could certainly do that. Right now, the way it's written, it just it applies to um all multifamily, including apartments and condos. Twenty-four A does not apply for single family and duplex, but pretty much everything else, commercial and everything else, it applies. And um and there was no um exception written in for deed restricted housing. Now, you know, given how we try to incentivize that, I could see why you may want to consider that. So certainly, if you guys wanted to set a precedence here and direction to make uh to initiate a code amendment, that's something we could look at.
I I'm okay with the five hundred.
Yeah, uh, employee housing, I'm cool with that. Height, like to take a look at what it looks like. Um engineering, I'll defer to Shannon, twenty percent open space or or more. And parking, I'm cool with the that variance.
Okay, um building height, I don't think this is a good candidate for a three-story building in this location. There's nothing behind it, um so I hope that a three-story building doesn't come to us. Um I'm fine with the parking. Can I interest you in a bike hub? Because we have a lot of bike hubs that we're interested in selling, so. Maybe we can talk.
And a ride share car too.
Okay, um the engineering, the detention, and I definitely want to see more um with that. Open space, I'm okay with twenty percent for this location. And I'm fine with the five hundred square feet for employee housing.
Kelly, can I get some clarification on one on this height issue? That my understanding, that this site slopes significantly from south to north. As you go from four fifty heading north, and that's where the three-story comes in at the northern end of the site. As the ground slopes down, you end up with some subterranean at the south end of the site. And then that's where, because you measure from the, you know, the worst case scenario. So if, are we saying we don't, that that at that point, that building wants to step down and cut units out? So that we don't have a third-story element there? I mean, the three-story is not like we're, we're not in a flat parcel building, three stories. It's a function of the land and the slope of the land that creates the third.
So it would appear as a two-story?
I think so, but on that far northern end, you're gonna see, you could see three, you'll see a terrace level and then there'd be.
I remember the terrace level from the original proposal.
And so that's what it is. And so if we're, pardon me?
The same?
Yeah, the terrace level would be there. So the issue is the sloping that creates the exposed area on the north end. And if we need to, if you're saying no three-story, then we have to change the building design and we're gonna lose units. And that's okay if that's the direction, but I just need to know because I don't want to spin my wheels on this. And if if you want to take a look at what it looks like with the slope, but if it's just a hell no on three stories, then I then tell me that.
If it, I mean, speaking for myself, if it appears as a two-story building um or mostly two-story, then I'm okay with that. Any other?
I think the the big thing for me was when uh of seeing that it was a half-story over. And now we're going to a story and a half over what it was, that set off alarm bells. But um you know, I trust how you guys are gonna design a building that works.
I understand that we have to come back with a drawing, and I know that there's a couple of feet that's associated with the modular build with this, right? That that raises that up. And so we come back, if we know that it's not a hell no, then we'll take a, well, I'll accept your um your view of that when we come back with the building design.
I think I just want to stress that this is like really, really the entrance of town. And while you can get, while you can get um away with more on the, you know, we've talked about three stories on the other because it's right up against the cliff. And so this is just a really different scenario, so I just didn't want to give you, because we've had conversations about three stories at the other location and being okay with it, I just want you to understand that there, we feel pretty differently.
I understand, and I, we have to show you visually that you're, something you'll be comfortable with, that burden on us.
Okay, great.
Generally, it's similar to what they've seen before. Their, the 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 previous design was within like D of the, it was a little, it was actually a little bit over that half is the problem. And so we're trying to get enough space to solve what was happening actually before, and so that's really, we're trying to get a little space to navigate. But it's, we're not trying to make a giant building. It's generally what you guys.
Okay.
What he said, so.
All right.
Okay, um then I'll take us through um the additional waivers that are being requested. The first one under land use two R um. So the way the uh code works, uh the land use district work there, land use district five is that it would allow for service, commercial, or lodging type uses. But then it goes on to say a possible exception to that is for workforce housing, um employee housing, I guess is what it says. Um staff interpret that to allow for it. However, there's some hesitation from the applicants in terms of, you know, uh you know, will the planning commission possibly give negative points? Because it's it's not as clearly articulated as it could be. So um and staffs, staff would not recommend negative points associated with that because it's spelled out in the discussion. But anyway, um BGB's requested that, so anyway, that that's one of the issues that I'm bringing to your attention here.
You're talking about two R, right?
Um next, policy five A, and that's architectural compatibility. There's a, they're proposing uh solar panels on the roof. And in the list of pri- um the way our our uh five A works is there's a prioritized list for where solar panels should be located. And first, it's on, you know, like a detached array in the backyard type thing. And then it progressively moves onto uh buildings. And finally, it's like the least desirable is one that's um, you know, vis- highly visible from right away. And so um their concern is it um, part of it will be visible from right away. But it's not the highest priority. It's one of the lower priorities in terms of actually putting it on top of a building. Staff doesn't have concerns with that. I don't think we would, um we've approved these before in these situations. But once again, um to be a little conservative, they've they've requested a waiver from that. In addition then, we have a five R architectural compatibility, that's non-natural materials for siding. That's one we need to have more discussions, I think, with um the applicant on. Um because we're um, we've let them know that um, yeah, I mean, it ties into what we did over at the Justice Center. Um and some non-mapped natural materials like fiber cement, we're generally comfortable with. Whereas some of the composite materials, not so comfortable with. We had that discussion with you guys and the planning commission maybe about a year ago. And made some amendments to the code on that, so we need to vet that a little further. Building height, um six R, this is a part um that relates to, you can't have a ridge line that's longer than fifty feet without breaking up that, articulating that ridge somehow. And if you don't, you get negative points for that. So they're they're, given their construction technique and what they're doing, they're thinking that they'll have a ridge that's longer than fifty feet. And so they're requesting a waiver from that. And then finally, um because of the overall kind of, so this site, um they don't believe they're gonna be be able to provide much of a buffer um along the eastern and northern portions of the site. That would also accrue negative points under a site buffering. Um so east would be towards Marty's storage, north would be towards like Brecken and the the summit center up there, whatever that's called.
The Brecken owners completely complaining?
They're difficult.
So um so and that's, that one is related to seven R. So um once again, I know you you you'd probably like to see some more details on that, but any initial comments um are appreciated at this point.
You wanna kick us off?
Uh sure, um two R. Okay, within relation to workforce housing, waiving waiving negative points for workforce housing. Uh three R.
No, five R for solar?
Five R for solar, I'm will, I'm I'm fine waving negative points for architectural compatibility in relation to solar.
Five R for siding?
The siding I want to see, I want to just look at that a little more closely. The screening, um I'm not worried about the east elevation. I think the north um we want to take a look at for a couple of reasons. I mean, we've got neighbors in close proximity and you've also got um the entrance to town. So I think we just want to look at that more closely. The roof line, I definitely want to look at and see. That all of them?
Jeffrey, you wanna?
Yeah, I'm okay with five A, the solar, you know, you get to break some eggs and make an omelet. Five R, you know, take a look at at it, how it comes across. Um the building ridge, I think with the surroundings, that's a six R. I'm not too concerned about that. And the screening, I'd like to know more. I have no problem with the east.
And there's two R. Land use, so that.
Land use for employee housing.
For employee housing.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm okay.
Uh two R and five A are both uh fine. On five R, I'd be interested if um, you know, we could do a percentage of um non-natural materials or a a higher percentage, kind of like we did with the open space and saying, you know, if code is, Mark, fifty percent?
I'm sorry.
What's code on non-natural material on um the these buildings, like, so certain?
Oh, oh, on, no more than twenty-five percent on an elevation.
So if if we have to bump that in order to make this work for modular, then I think that's the way I would prefer to go. Um versus just uh waving it all together. Uh the ridge line, I I think that's one of those ones that we have to see. And um I would like to see a site plan before having an opinion on seven R.
Carol?
Um two R, I'm fine with, five A for the solar, fine with, um five R for the materials. I'd like to just see more, have some parameters. This is an incredibly visible location. Same thing goes for the buffer. I'd be fine with less of a portion, but maybe a higher density of trees, just working with the applicant on that. Um building height for the long bridge lines, I think that factors into the building height and the design of the building, so I'd like to see more.
Okay, um two R, I agree with staff interpretation. Five A, I totally support. Um five R, I would like to see what these materials are. Um the ridge line, I'm totally okay with, and the buffer, um I'm okay. I'd like you to do what you can, but I understand that it might be a little bit less than ideal. Okay.
I just had a a couple more then. Um I just noted, and this is just for information, the things that weren't um aren't in this request, probably touched on most of these, but no, no TDRs from the town. There used to be this whole kind of complicated housing credits formula that was built into this thing that honestly, I'm glad is gone. And um and uh no longer is there. And then, as I said, uh Mike's gonna cover the piss, so there's no request on that. So the final thing, we're looking for your um input on is a proposed commitments. Uh public benefits, so to speak, on this, uh to allow for these code waivers. And um so they've been outlined here, the workforce housing is not, you 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 think that's a public benefit, yes it is. But in this case, Mike's doing it to, you know, obsolete twenty-four A, so um to mitigate for that. So it's really not part of the public benefits. So they're outlined here and they're mainly having to do with a number of improvements to um for pedestrian crossings, sidewalks, um signage, um et cetera. So I'm not gonna go into detail on those, but um here to take your comments to see if you guys are generally comfortable with this being the list of public benefits that would be associated with this um annexation and development agreement.
All right, any comments about these, the pub- the public benefits?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Shannon, are, is there anything missing in this list of uh engineering upgrades? That intersection and and Highway nine and and Highway and County Road four fifty? Is there anything missing in your opinion?
No, I think it's a good list. Um those intersection improvements with the AD ramps and the push buttons, similar to what we talked about as ski hill, it's in dire need there. Um and they're also doing the sidewalk extension from their development to the north. That's actually on the CIP, so that would be great to get that done with the development as well. I know there's been talks of an underpass at this location, but I don't think that's feasible with this development or maybe ever. So I I think this is a good list, Dick.
I wouldn't even ask for that.
I know. And we we did a lot of work, and assuming this is very similar to the last project. Um at the end, staff was in agreement with what was proposed on all the waivers too with infiltration, the detention. We can get into those details, but assuming we're along the same lines, then we're really supportive of it.
Is there any consideration on with either during construction or once the the building is there with its proximity to the Blue River of runoff of blurring the river with with any of these changes? And what mitigation is um required to ensure that?
So that's handled in the code for the infiltration and detention. And unless the ask is changed, it wasn't an ask on the water quality portion. Portion of it. It was a requirement that they weren't quite meeting the distance from the river with their infiltration galleries. We had like two hundred and fifty feet and they were at like two ten or something. So I don't think they're asking for a variance from the water quality. Measures, but we can bring that back if that's not the case.
Okay, great.
Okay, any final comments or questions? Supportive of this list of benefits?
I am. Yep, me too.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you, guys.
Want to talk to our housing crew about. About using. Prefab houses or whatever they're called, the boxes. Get a few lessons learned.
We we are just got our TCOs on eighty-seven units constructed prefab over in Edwards. So we're we're learning that I constructed it in conjunction with Bale Health.
Yeah.
And so we're some of the things like.
Who did it?
It was out of, it was the Nashua out of Boise. That built them. And so like when you see this ridge line question, that's a lesson learned from over there. And so you'll see some, that's that's part of our experiences. How we'll modulate the building from what was designed before to what we have now, consistent with what we talked about with staff, you know, variances and approvals.
Is it going to look similar to those buildings? Like, are you hoping for similar? Is there any reason for us to look at those?
No, they're they're like. There's like thirteen buildings over there that each have like four or five, six units in them, and so it's completely dissimilar to. For us, it's lessons learned on where these where these bridges meet and create leaks. That's what the, that's really what we're trying to avoid.
We we also learned that lesson.
And so there you go. So there's. There's lessons learned and things to avoid.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks, staff, for all your work.
Thanks again, counselor. Appreciate your time.
I have to dread what we're going to have for supper tonight.
Meeting adjourned. I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, February twenty-seventh to order. Roll call, please, Helen.
Dick Carlton. Jeffrey Bergeron.
Here for a while.
Earl Sade.
Here.
I just moved her. Jay Beckerman. Lincoln. Absent. Mayor Protem Owens.
Here. All right. Approval of the minutes. With them. And any changes to the agenda? Okay, communications to council. This is non-agenda items only, three-minute timeline, please. I don't think there's anyone coming up, so we'll go ahead with the Breckenridge Ski Resort. Jake, John. Nice to have you.
Thanks for having me. It feels like it's been a minute, and yet it feels like it was just yesterday. So appreciate that. Yeah, a couple of updates. Like I said, we're kind of full swing for us. We just passed our halfway mark, so I feel like I got a lot. But I'll try and get through it quickly. Beginning of the season, kind of that pre-Christmas time, we ran into some challenges between our snowmaking and weather. Create a bit of an issue as we tried to ramp up towards Christmas, so we got creative and did some things we've never done before. A Breck and a couple of the patrollers weighed in on that. We provided creative access to our Chair Six and T-Bar terrain, first by hiking, then by kind of cord and rope traverses. Which we'd never done before. We opened terrain with what we call controlled access, where our patrols limiting the amount of people and for how long they could go in there. And the reason being is we wanted to get pressure on that terrain, but we didn't want to get skeed out just in case we didn't get natural snow, we'd lose that terrain. So we were very creative about that. We opened Peak Six with a package we've never opened before. And we contemplated on that for a while, and we took a bit of a gamble, and then luckily, right after we opened that, snow came in and we were able to get all the terrain open, but. That was another very creative solution. And then early season, we got a lot of feedback about our grooming wasn't up to par, and we too felt that way. And much of that was because we didn't have some of the snow depth on a lot of those trails to be able to groom it. We were afraid to put cats on that because we were afraid to tear it up. And we rely heavily on those experienced cat operators to tell us whether they think they can get it on there or not, so. We are back to normal now. Then we had a very large controlled avalanche on Peak Seven, actually one of the largest avalanches that many of the patrollers had ever seen at Breck. And with that, we opened up the Lake Shoots and Snow White before we've opened up Peak Ten or Peak Seven with Whale's Tail and whatnot. Which has never been done before at Breck. So they got a little creative. Luckily, we got the Breckenridge winds came in and a snowstorm quickly followed, and we were able to get that terrain open. With the new Chair Five going up the old terrain park, we opened up a. I don't want to call it new because we used to have a park on freeway years ago, but we brought back the freeway park and the halfpipe. We've got a ton of great feedback from the halfpipe. And then over on Peak Nine, we also moved our Peak Nine Small and Medium Terrain Park. To a new location, which we're getting great feedback on. It's much larger. We can add more features, a little more diverse terrain for folks. And then on February tenth, which is the second latest in the five years I've been here, we got to a hundred percent. So it took us a while. We finally got there. And then with the recent snowfalls we've gotten over the last really three weeks, we're starting to creep back to our ten-year average for natural snowfall. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting close. From an employee standpoint, I wanted to highlight a change that we made this year, and we're seeing really good success with it. We transitioned to a new workforce management plan, and for lack of better terms. We went away from Excel schedules on the wall to a digital system that employees can use. A couple of things that's working out for that is it's been able to streamline our budgeting process, our staffing process, and our scheduling process. It's also made it a little bit easier for employees to get exposure to shifts in other teams, shifts in other departments. People who maybe only get in twenty or thirty hours in one team can sign up for shifts in another team. So it's able for us to better use our staff. Across departments and across seasons to kind of match guest demand. We're seeing way more sharing of staff across teams than we've ever seen. Because this is one platform that not only the resort is using, but the company is using. So people can see different types of shifts that are available to skill sets they may or may not have. Flow and circulation, I want to go back one more thing. We've put a lot of effort on our culture with our team. We've been spending a lot of time with some trainings and developments with our staff, our year-round staff, our seasonal staff. We're asking them to get more engaged in the community through volunteering and getting on boards. And to me, my goal is to continue to drive up our return rates every year. And reason for that is, one, make staffing a whole bunch, whole lot easier when you're just bringing back the same staff. They know what they're doing. There's less involvement in training. But also they're more engaged at the resort, they're more engaged in town, they're more engaged in the community. We're getting great feedback on some of the trainings and plantings we're doing, and people are really appreciating that. Flow and circulation. We continue to focus on this across our resort with the guests, make sure that from arrival to departure is the best seamless experience they can have. A couple of things we're doing is we have a dedicated group that meets weekly, that focuses on our weekends and holidays. And then they have a running chat that they use throughout the week to talk about where they need support, what support is needed, how we can move people around the mountain. We're getting a ton of great feedback on that. We continue to see increased use on our gondola ski back terrain. We kind of monitor that on a daily and weekly basis. And then we're pushing the carpooling and the snowstaying programs through our social media, trying to message guests about how they can get here, how they can move around town. And again, just trying to get more guests less reliant on cars. The Peak Eight evolution has been transformational and more than we could have anticipated. We're seeing more guests using Chair Five than they had in past, and now they're on appropriate terrain. And a couple of the things we're seeing off that is we've been able to reduce the size of the Colorado maze. We're seeing less user stops on the Colorado chair. Same thing on the Rocky, we're seeing less user stops on there, and we've been able to reduce that maze as well, meaning we're opening up more or more space in that base area. The SRS experience has dramatically improved, especially for the littles. And for families, they have less distance to walk, the terrain is much better, it's a much seamless experience. And then overall changes to the flow and circulation through that base area has dramatically improved. We still have some some things we're trying to work out with the amount of guests who just tend to stand in the base area in the middle of nowhere. So we're working on that one. We don't quite have that one solved, but we're getting there. Following up on those those upgrades at Peak Seven and Peak Eight, we're beginning to work with the Forest Service. We'll start working with you all and the community on the evolution at Peak Nine. In alignment with our MDP, we're continuing to prioritize our flow and circulation. Across the resort and especially in key key base areas and access points. Peak Nine right now is an area that needs some attention. The Peak Nine project will include a new gondola, runs next to the Quicksilver. A new improved learning terrain for the kids and ski school, as well as replacement and future upgrades of sea chair above the overlook restaurant. More to come on this as we kind of get into more design details and more follow-ups. We'll make sure to work with you. Forest Service and the community to kind of socialize our plans and work through those plans and have discussions around what's working and what's not working. Community updates. We had a super successful First Tracks program in January. We saw participation way increase over last year and the year prior to that, so we're really looking forward to how we can continue to expand on that program. We held our Epic Promise Community Breakfast in January, or excuse me, early February, and we had great turnout for that. We want to continue to partner with the town on some of our bus routes and bus transportation, so how we can continue to improve on that. And then in January, our company released their environmental and social responsibility report. And a couple of highlights I want to come call out. Hundred percent renewable energy for the second year in a row. We're ahead of schedule to meet our emission goals as a company. We're on track for our zero waste goals. And at the resort, Breck is ahead of its reduction in waste goals for this year alone. We're going to continue to try and pioneer on some of that. The plastic free ban at Pioneer is continuing to be received really well. We're working through some kinks, but we're, it's going really well. Obviously, it supports the commitment to zero the company has in the town's plan as we move into the summer. We're also working on plans to integrate the plastic free plan into our summer outlets, so we'll be all plastic free in our summer food and beverage operations for the summer as well. And then April seventh, for the fourteenth, we'll be hosting the North American Junior Free Ride Championships. We'll have five hundred kids and their families in town for a seven to ten day period. To compete over on Peak Six and a little bit on Peak Seven. So first time we've been able to get this event at Breck, and it's been a couple of years in the making, so we're super excited about that.
Seventh to the fourteenth?
Yeah, yeah. Spring operations. So we plan to operate into May as weather and conditions permit. Peak Nine and Ten will operate through April twenty-first. Peak Eight will operate, or excuse me, through the fourteenth. Peak Eight will operate through the twenty-first. We will continue to run the Colorado Chair for one additional week from the twenty-first to the twenty-eighth. On the twenty-seventh, we have our spring pond skimming splash jam at the base of Peak Eight. We'll have a concert going on this year. We're still working on some details on that. And then late April into May, we'll have skiing for intermediate through expert based out of Peak Seven. With access to Peak Six, Peak Seven, and the High Alpine of Peak Eight. We'll see how conditions hold up and try and put it together like we have the last couple of years. And then summer, we're getting real close to finalizing our summer plans. We do plan to operate daily from June fourteenth. Through Labor Day with activities out of Peak Eight, and then again at the top of the Colorado Chair, what we call our High Alpine Camp. We'll have the return of all three slides coming back in this year and a return of everyday operations for the coaster as well. There you have it. Yeah, it feels like a lot. Yeah, yeah. Any questions, comments?
Anything for John?
Great job on all the sustainability efforts and the zero waste and the. Energy like that's. Very impressive.
Yeah, it's, you know, working with these vendors is is becoming a little bit easier, and I think they're starting to see it now. Was our biggest challenge in the beginning is getting that support to be able to deliver on some of that. Also getting buy-in for our team. What's up?
Gotten Pepsi on board, John?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I think they're a little nervous about how quick this could ramp up, but they're working on plans to try and bring that on as well.
Great job.
Yeah, and then like we didn't, we didn't anticipate the amount. We would be washing like the hardware that goes through the plates, the cups, the glasses, right? We had to kind of rethink how we do that because we went from washing them twice a day to five times a day, which is good. We just got to now work on some of energy efficiency around that as well.
And the staff community engagement, I feel like that's something that we've talked about over and over. Over the last few years of just like, you know, when we're, when there's a lot of turnover or people who've given back to the community for so long are retiring out of the community. It's exciting to see that next generation come in and.
Yeah, and we we're continuing to push on it, right? The more people we have who can who can find they can make a career here, the more stake they'll have in what we're doing in the resort and the town, and it just makes all of our lives that much easier. It's not easy, right? Being such a seasonal job, but we're finding a lot of success with people wanting to participate in some of the things we're doing. So we're actually just started one that we're actually taking people who are not year-round and moving them to the summer because we had such a demand to participate in one we're launching later this week. So now we're doing just seasonal people starting this week, and then for the folks who are year-round, we'll come back to them in the summer because we know they'll be here. So we're excited about those type of things.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Good work.
Thank you all.
Thanks so much for coming and giving us the update. Lucy, Brektourism.
So, good evening. I just want to give a shout out to John and the snowmaking crew at the resort for all the extra hoops. And extra work they had to do to make those blocks, to get us the snow for those blocks. They had a lot of extra challenges this year, which I just got the lowdown on. And so I appreciate what we had out there that much more, so thank you and your crew. And thanks to all of the good work that's happening up there. In large part, our room nights are up, is a good segue or whatever. Room nights are up one percent for the season. ADRs are down, but you know, room nights are holding. President's Weekend was down about five percent, especially the. Sunday, Monday. And but we're February still going to end up flat to one percent up, so it was just for whatever reason that dip. March right now is down six percent. The tenth through the sixteenth are the big weeks where the public school breaks. We fully expect March is going to fill in, and March will probably end up well ahead because Easter is the last, you know, the last day. So it's great that we've got this big group coming in April because I think otherwise April, you know, potentially could be pretty light in terms of room nights. But we're looking at, you know, a season that's pretty flat to last year and just hoping that ADRs. Will either level up or we can get some additional room nights to, you know, make sure we we hit the revenue target. Summer's looking up, but it's way too early for that to mean anything. In our last, last time we were here with Jake, we talked about the Resident Sentiment Survey, and we said we'd go a little deeper. On the second homeowner questions, and we've done that. Technology is not quite where we want it to be to really. Distill all of the comments because we have so many comments and it's it's still hard to work with that. But what we know, and what Jake talked about a bit, we know that the MPS scores for second homeowners within that whole big. Bigger Resident Sentiment Survey went down significantly. MPS has a place to live. And but they're also very happy. They're like eighty-eight percent of them agreed with, you know, I'm happy living here in Breckenridge. So and that was consistent. They're, you know, happier and maybe had more of a slide on the MPS in the overall group, but they're, you know, following those same trends. They they're still very favorable towards tourism, but we do have the comments about crowding and, you know, that that sort of thing, but overall very favorable, like ninety-four percent. Over ninety-two percent the last time we did it. When we cross-tab the comments with the MPS scores. You know, there's no surprise, we're seeing concerns about short-term rentals, either too many regulations or too many STRs, you know, so you can't. It's not clearly, just like the the public that came in here and spoke, it's it's split, right? So that says to me that the survey is working because that's the reality of of what's here. So what is interesting is, and we looked at the spread of how many years. They were homeowners, so from one year to twenty-one plus. Because we wanted to see, well, is it just the new people or the people that have been here a long time? And there wasn't anything there. It's a really good distribution. Across that time frame, so I thought that was really good. We had a lot more respondents, more second homeowners responded than in prior years. So I think because of the STR questions. You know, they're 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 more engaged. They're paying attention to what's going on and voicing an opinion, so I think that's a good thing. While they were very happy living here, like score of eighty-eight, their score on feeling welcome was sixty-eight. Which that, you know, was. You know, it's not bad. It's better than fifty percent, but I think we can do a lot better there. So just like the golf pricing that we heard about this afternoon, those kinds of things, I think will go a long way to making sure. Homeowners, second homeowners feel like they're really included, like a local, like a resident, which they are. It's one of the focuses we're going to take on at the BTO is try to find ways to engage with that segment. A little better than we do, make sure they know about the download, make sure they know about our events and impacts, but also volunteering if they're interested, that kind of stuff. So that's going to be one of our key. So that's going to be one of our key focuses for CAS group. So any questions on the second homeowners?
Yeah, I couldn't hear you as well as I would have liked. On, on the second home in the STR issue, they, you said they're kind of divided?
Yeah, we have a lot of comments where people think, you know, they don't like the regulation. I mean, no surprise, right? And then we have a lot of comments on like, there's too many STRs in my neighborhood. You know, there's noisy, you know, it's both, it's, it's, it reflects the reality of what is happening here. Yeah. I mean, if it was really one side or the other, that would tell us something, but we don't have that. So looking, anything else on lodging? Then looking forward, Christine does have summer 24 marketing in market, so it's out. Really kind of hit stride in March and April is when we have the lion's share of it, but we've been in market since January. And we will have our April, or our summer preview we'll do in April, and that's when we'll show the creative and everything. So everybody can see that we do have a, a nice brand refresh on just the, the creative aspects of the messaging. And we have, let's see, two, on the 15th, our board, the BTO board, started the 2025 planning. So we did our strategic planning with the board, have a few follow-up things that we'll pick up in subsequent board meetings, but we got the lion's share done. We did our team version of that today. And not unlike what's happening at the resort, we spent most of the morning talking about team culture. You know, the goal, 3% to 4% growth. Okay, got that. Now we're going to talk about how we work together to, to get there, right? So overall, in terms of looking forward to, it's hard to get a lot of data for 25, but what we're seeing for the balance of 24 and going forward economically, very favorable forecast, much better than people would have thought. We had Brian Lewandowski come in, he's that professor from CU. And really strong economic forecasts looking forward for now. And the same thing with the travel outlook, you know, we, we just took trends from multiple resources and distilled it down into what's relevant for Breckenridge. And overall, there's a lot of, we'll have some outflow with people going back to the kind of destinations they used to, you know, going back to international and going back to cities and things like that. But there's so much opportunity for casting a wider net, you know, wellness tourism, food tourism, you know, culinary tourism. There's so many trends out there that are growing that we, you know, fit Breckenridge really well. And one of the ones we're the most excited about is we always watch sustainability. And people say, oh, it's important, it's important. But if you ask them if it's a factor in their decision as to where they go, it hasn't, it's been like 38%, you know, on that level. But that's growing in importance now too. So I think we'll, there will be a day when we can put a lot more of our sustainability messaging in the marketplace versus waiting until they're closer, you know, to coming here, so. Questions?
I have a question. You know, there was a fair amount of hand wringing when, when we were looking at the, what was going to happen on I-70 with the whole Floyd Hill thing? And, and actually, we've been going down to Denver, flying out a fair amount this winter. But have you noticed if from, from any sort of surveys that that it's an issue or it's been hindrance to the guest?
You know, I, I, maybe you've seen, I don't know if you can tell from the resort side, we can't. We haven't heard about it, we're not, it's not showing up in any data or anything like that. And I know CDOT really leaned in hard for all these, you know, apps and different things you can get so you know when the road's closing and things like that, but.
So it's always been awful, now it's just awful and a little bit worse. So, so that's, we get that going for us.
Well, it's kind of like the airport, you know, you build it for 50,000 a year and you have 70 something thousand that, I don't know the numbers for the highway, but it's a similar situation. Yeah, just choose your arrival time or your departure times carefully.
I was delayed three times yesterday.
I've been riding the bus a lot and the tips, the like, you know, are, is it, do you like Breck or what?
Yeah, I like Breck.
They're great.
Yeah.
I really enjoy them. I don't know if other people are reading them, but.
Yeah, I was on the brown route, I read them all. It's like, well, maybe we should switch a few of them out, you know, just keep them fresh, but. Yeah, yeah. Totally, yeah. No, I think it's good and they're well received, you know, we have, we have a lot of the part, you know, we started that partner program last year and, you know, first year it's, you know, fits and starts, it was good. But I think this year, now we've moved Holly over to CAS, so we've got, you know, somebody shoring up Tessa. And so I think we really are going to be able to integrate in, into the business community really in a meaningful, much more meaningful way. So I'm excited, we're all excited about that.
You're always doing great things, Lucy.
I don't know, why couldn't you sleep? That wellness thing, yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, continued business, second reading of council bills, series 2024. Council Bill Number Two, Series 2024, An Ordinance of the Town of Breckenridge Setting forth the annual supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023 and ending December 31st, 2023.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council, Tracy Lambert, Senior Accountant, here for the second reading for the final appropriation for the 2023 budget. The request for 152,000 to reconcile the five funds that needed a little top up to get us through the end of the year.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions? Any comments from the public? Seeing none? Can I have a motion?
Yes, on second reading, a move we pass Council Bill Number Two, Series 2024, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Good work on the cemetery fund.
The extra $400. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yes. Council Bill Number Three, Number 2024, A Bill for the Ordinance Establishing a Process for Certifying Leans to the County for Unpaid Administrative Fines Imposed for Violations of the Housing Code.
Mayor Protem and Councilmembers, this is a bill on second reading. There's been no changes since first, and this establishes a process to collect unpaid fines, administrative fines imposed for violations of the housing code by certifying leans to the county treasurer for a lien on real property. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Kirsten. Any questions? Any comments from the public? Can I have a motion, please?
On second reading, a move we pass Council Bill Number Three, Series 2024, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yes. Council Bill Number Four, Series 2024, A Bill for an Ordinance Amending the Administrative Appeals Provision of the Housing Regulations.
This is an additional amendment to that same chapter on housing regulations that does some cleanup for timeframes for someone who's been imposed a fine for violations of the housing code. They have the opportunity to dispute the town's position through an administrative appeal. That same bill also includes a process for someone challenging the town's position to reach out to the town attorney and resolve the matter in lieu of a hearing for efficiency purposes, if that can be done. And there's been no changes to this bill since first reading as well. Let me know if there are any questions.
Thank you, Kirsten. Any questions? Any comments on Council Bill Number Four, Series 2024? Seeing none? Can I have a motion?
On second reading, a move we pass Council Bill Number Four, Series 2024, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Beckerman. Councilmember Bergeron. Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yes. New business, first reading of Council Bills Number Five, Series 2024, A Bill for an Ordinance Approving a Subordination Agreement with First Bank pertaining to Staples Village Homes LLC Financing for the Staples Village Project. Lori.
Yeah, good evening. For the record, Lori Best, Town of Breck Housing and Childcare Manager. This is first reading of a bill that will authorize the town to enter into a subordination agreement with both First Bank and the developer, Staples Village LLC. The subordination agreement is a requirement of First Bank. It's a pretty standard requirement for a lender. We went through it and made sure that the town's interests were protected specifically in the event of any kind of default of the loan. The zoning will stay in place and the property may only be used for those purposes. So that was our primary issue and needed to make sure that was included in the subordination agreement. And thanks for Kirsten to work so closely with First Bank to make sure we were covered. So we recommend approval of the bill on first reading so that we can then move on to second reading and get this executed. So the developer can obtain the financing to continue to move forward with the development, which is currently underway.
Thank you, Lori. Exciting. Any questions for Lori?
Exciting.
It is exciting. All right. Any comments from the public? Seeing none? Can I have a motion?
A move we pass Council Bill on first reading, citing Number Five, Series 2024, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No. My excluded from a further discussion.
Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yes. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you.
Council Bill Number Six, Series 2024, A Bill for an Ordinance Amending the Code Pertaining to Water Service Charges.
The laughter was so exciting, I'm yawning now.
It's tiring now. I agree. James?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Town Council. This ordinance for first reading will amend Title 12, several chapters of Title 12 to revise the definition, the rates, the usages and some fee service charges for the municipal water service. I understand there were a few questions today at work session that were asked, but I'm here to take any additional questions, should Town Council have any?
Shannon and Kristen did a great job. Any further questions for James? All right, any comments from the public? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
On first reading, a move we pass Council Bill Number Six, Series 2024, the title which has been read into the record.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Member Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yes. All right, moving into resolutions, Resolution Number Eight, Series 2024, A Resolution Approving a Donation to the Family Intercultural and Intercultural Resource Center, Community Food Markets.
Mayor Protem and Council, you have before you a resolution that would formalize the $50,000 donation you decided to make to the FERC food pantry or food markets. I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there questions for Shannon?
No. FERC has been very happy lately.
Good for them. We want to keep them.
That's great.
Any comments from the public on this resolution number eight? No, we're not doing that, sorry.
We only have like one public here.
I cannot get out of that, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Can I have a motion?
Yes, I move we pass Resolution Number Eight, Series 2024, A Resolution Approving a Donation to the Family and Intercultural Resource Center, Community Food Markets.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yes. All right, we have one action to adopt water attorney rates.
Yes, maybe I should jump in real quickly and just say this is not being done through a resolution, it's just a simple motion. And this is a request by our, from our water attorney Glenn Prozac, who has served in this role for many years and is incredibly valued to us, nominal increase in his fees from 400 to 450.
Does this notion have a number?
No, no number.
I just reform?
To approve the increase.
Okay.
Or motion to not.
You want me to just take, take the initiative and?
Would you please take the initiative?
Okay. Oh, yeah.
I'm pleased though. Since it's just informal, do I have to?
Now could be the time.
All right, you can go ahead and.
Yes, I move with, I make a motion that we up, up Glenn Prozac's salary from 400 to 450.
Second.
For an hourly rate, yes.
Up per day.
Okay.
Because.
We don't have to do roll call. Is that right? Oh, we do, okay. Roll call, please, Helen.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman. Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Owens.
Yeah. All right, planning commission decisions. Anything to discuss here?
But that was exciting, though.
Again. Report of the town manager and staff.
Got a couple of things. One, I wanted to give you an update on the Gold Rush Games. I can't remember if this came up, the last Breck Events update to you, but Mike Shipley is interested in sort of getting a Kingdom Days type event started again. So what he's proposed is a one, one day closure, Saturday, June 14th, until four o'clock, it would be a closure of Ridge Street from Washington to Lincoln. And they would do some mini cart racing and some kind of fun relay race type stuff. And they've requested the use of the Upper Exchange Lot. So this will go through the SEPA process and you'll see it come back and from the Breck Events Committee, but I just kind of wanted to give you a heads up that it was in the process.
He's a guy from Country Boy?
Yes.
Nice.
Yep. And, yeah.
For that street closure, will we reach out to the other, to the business owners?
Ask them?
Yeah, Mike called me.
Tell Mike to reach out.
He called me and I encouraged him to, so I might take that a step further and help him do that.
Okay. Yeah, we.
Business owners on that 100 block of Ridge, South Ridge.
Kind of put it on them to get the support of the businesses, so that would be great.
It's a good time. I mean, it's early enough in June where it's.
Yeah. Not busy.
Well, I mean, it's just starting. Yeah.
Have it back, something like that back.
Yeah, I think so.
I will remind you of this probably five or 12 more times between now and April 23rd. For those of you that are still going to be with us, Jeffrey, I'm sorry you won't. We, we will have what's termed in the charter as an organizational meeting before the work session on April 23rd. And Kirsten will do an update of council rules and some decorum and a few things to kind of get the new council off and rolling on the right foot.
Do you need any help with that?
It's the impeccable timing.
Not really my update, but Tamara sent an update for BCA since Todd's not here. So I just emailed that to you. One thing I will note in there that you'll see is that they're, they're really trying to work on options for sled recycling. So they've been taking a portion of the sleds that get left behind at the sledding hills. And they, what Tamara has proposed to her board is that they sort of upscale the equipment that they use to do precious plastics and make durable sleds out of the flimsy ones that you get at the grocery store and then maybe try to rent them to people so that, you know, we can maybe prevent some people or convince some people not to buy the whatever, single-use sleds at the grocery store. So I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of what that is when you read it in there. The other thing that we are talking about internally is potentially bringing back to the idea of a fee for the sleds the idea of a fee for the sleds that people buy at the grocery store like that. And and part of that presentation will also talk about the costs that we incur when we have to take those sleds down to Boulder to get them recycled and how many tons of material we have and things like that. So what we're hoping to do is bring that back to you at some point as a package to have a solution to the problem, not just add a fee to the sleds, but also have an idea of how we maybe can prevent people from buying them. So quick overview, but I think Scott and some of the staff will come back with a presentation at some point here in the near future.
There were thousands of them at City Market earlier. I took pictures of them, I'm trying to find. You notice that's the most dangerous winter pastime, is sledding? I mean, not on, not on high hills, but.
Road doesn't really surprise me.
Yeah. I had a friend broke his coccyx.
Yeah.
Which I thought was like the guy.
No, no.
Sorry.
All right. And council members, cast an MMC? Did we have MMC?
We did. That was one we.
I think we reported on.
Did we already?
Because it was all about the snowstorm. Okay, so we haven't had either of those recently, so we're going to move on to open space, which will be Jay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He got rave reviews. I talked to a lot of the crew last night, they said they, he's like the second best council rep they've had.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Behind Aaron.
Oh, I think we talked about a lot of this and Mark did an amazing job earlier, but just, you know, some quick hits was that the Golden Horseshoe Connection, the Dry Gulch Trail was halted due to elk population being witnessed on camera, which I believe you predicted ahead of time. We had a, a current state trails grant denied, which was kind of a bummer, and that's, it's kind of throwing some of our finance, the financials through. We do have a BOSAC Town Council Joint Meeting upcoming, and that is April ninth, and so looking forward to seeing that. We went over the state of open space, which will be heading to our desk shortly. And the biggest thing that I took out of that was that winter and summer visitations to our trails are narrowing, like it used to be summer up here and winter down here. And that's real, that gap is really closing, which I just thought was fantastic that, you know, I think maybe some of that had to do with COVID of getting people to figure out that there's something other than the ski resort to do in the winter. Had a master plan review that was pretty narrow discussion. And then a twenty-twenty-four projects list and accessible trail improvements. There's a lot of good things that were coming out of that. One of the thoughts was, in addition to the primary benefit, they wanted the commission or the advisory commission, I wanted to see secondary benefits listed to each improvement. Nightmare will, the lower part of Nightmare will be getting a trail realignment due to a recent acquisition. Bouncy Bridge over by River Trail is looking there, making the troll ADA accessible or wheelchair accessible?
Wheelchair.
It's already wheelchair friendly in there.
So then it'd be ADA with with some, some of that going on. Cucumber Gulch, retrofitting that for mobility impaired and which I found interesting was actually, at the time, was accessible. And then just with the rules changing and the policies changing, it's no longer, so trying to make some changes to get that back in line. Reeling dredge bough bouts are getting ready to be done in spring. And yeah, and then the the last two quick things was the Town of Breck signage plan RFP was being discussed, and that's, I have a budget of seventy-five thousand dollars to get the plan of how to do a better job signing our wayfinding, regulatory signage, etiquette, kiosk, access and inclusion. And so that that's, we're going to have that to look forward to, which is exciting. And then last but not least, the meeting schedule was agreed to be pushed from the fourth Monday to the third Monday of each month, and that will start in May.
That's kind of, you know, that makes my report seem a little embarrassing. Oh, at least you understand what you're saying. I feel like the bug in the punch bowl.
Jeffrey.
Don't be so hard on yourself.
Anything to add to tourism?
Nope.
Carol, are you still up there?
Yes, I'm on.
Do you have a history update?
No, we have not had a meeting.
Okay, do you have a CML Advisory Board update?
We did have a meeting last Friday. I think a lot of what was discussed, we reviewed, gosh, I don't know how many dozen bills, but within the Legislative Committee, we reviewed those bills, so a lot of the noteworthy ones were in Kirsten's memo.
Great. And what about social equity?
We had a meeting on Monday. The full minutes will be in our next package.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jay, childcare?
No meeting.
And arts and culture, master plan steering committee?
No meeting.
Oh, okay. Any other matters? Any other matters? I have one. There's a candidate forum here on March sixth. Everyone should come and see who's running for open seats on council and mayor.
What time?
Five to eight.
Cocktail party.
Cocktail from five to five-thirty. That's what they said. All right. Anything else, Shannon?
I don't have anything else.
Did you guys see somebody else's hand raised?
Yeah, but we don't.
We don't.
A comment via Zoom?
Gotcha. We asked.
So I guess for those who are online who have raised their hand, please email mayor@townofbreckenridge.com